Good evening and welcome to the Winthrop School Committee meeting of Monday, November 23rd, 2020. The meeting will be held by way of Zoom teleconference. Patty, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Boncory?
Here.
Mr. Capabianco?
Here.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Swope?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Perrin?
Present. Okay, the Pledge Allegiance. Ms. Galvin, will you lead us in the Pledge Allegiance this evening?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
-of the United States of America and to the Republic- Which it stands-
Which it stands-
One nation-
One nation-
Under God- Indivisible-
Indivisible-
Liberty-
Liberty-
Justice-
Justice-
For all.
Okay, our next portion is public comment. I want to remind those participating, public comment, to keep their comments within three minutes so that everyone will have an opportunity to speak. This is not an opportunity for debate. It is also not an opportunity for personal attacks or insults or attacks on people's character. So I would ask that you stick to the issue and be polite. And let's make sure we have a very thoughtful dialogue. Okay, do we have any public comment this evening?
Mr. Perrin, I have someone in the audience with their hand up and I also have a letter. Would you prefer me to do the people live here and then I read the letter?
I think live would be best.
Okay.
You had five.
Okay. So I have Michael Noonan.
Can you hear us?
Michael, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Hi, Michael.
Hi, I'm Michael Noonan. I'm a fourth grader at the ATC. Thank you for taking my call. My teacher is going above and beyond to make this work for all my classmates. But I am a nine-year-old boy learning by screen, watching videos, and taking breaks. I can't take it anymore. I miss meeting my teacher in person. I miss meeting my friends and new classmates, and I miss learning in person. Please give me an opportunity to learn in school. Give me, give my parents to cho- to, uh, the choice to send me in. Thank you all.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Mr. Matucci, can you keep track of time and let me know if anyone hits three minutes or close to it so we can ask them to wrap up?
Yes, sir.
Any further public comment?
Yes, we do. Uh, we have Alyssa Dagno. Oh, I'm sorry, I clicked on, um, Adriana.
Yep, I'm here. Did you want Alyssa to go first, or?
No, you're, you're in. I can pick her next.
Okay, no problem. So, good evening, everyone. I'm speaking this evening as a mother of three, two who are enrolled at Winthrop Middle School in Gorman Fort Banks. I am in support of the reopening of our schools, and I support the recent guidance of our governor to get students physically back in the classroom. From Tuesday's meeting with the Board of Health, I heard from some in public comment that the current remote learning model is working for our younger students. Personally, I would say that this has been a trying time for my family, and we are doing our best to stay positive, especially when our cameras are on. But we are getting by. From public comment, I also heard about students smiling, highly engaged, getting high ESL scores, enjoying small group work, and collaborating in Zoom breakout rooms. I think all of this is great to see for those who are doing well, even if it's on a computer screen. With the hybrid remote model for GFB, our younger students will be losing many levels of engagement once the district transitions to the next phase of reopening. Asynchronous learning was not well received by students or families in the spring. From the spring, we learned that asynchronous work, whether it's accompanied by pre-recorded videos or not, requires significant parental involvement. There are many inequities in the delivery method of asynchronous learning, especially for essential workers, English language learners, and families without the socioeconomic resources to facilitate their kids learning at home. I do not believe asynchronous learning, whether you are a hybrid or remote family, is supporting our younger students. Students who are still building a rapport with their teacher and classmates from September will be losing their classroom communities with asynchronous learning. This is not ideal for hybrid or remote students. For all of the surveys, I chose hybrid for my children because I am for the reopening of schools. I also selected this model because I know, at the very least, my GFB student will receive live, real-time instruction at least two days a week. As of now, there will be no real-time instruction for remote learners, and it will be minimal for those who selected hybrid. Superintendent Howard mentioned in Tuesday's meeting that this is dependent on staffing. Now that it is known who will be hybrid or remote for the next phase, what is the next step to support real-time instruction for our youngest learners? Remote and hybrid modalities are not a one-size-fits-all, and I strongly believe our students deserve better. Thank you.
Adriana, could I just have your last name for the record?
Sure, Pavlos, P-A-V-L-O-S.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have Alyssa Dagno.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank the Winthrop Public Schools Administration and School Committee for their time and energy during this difficult time. Winthrop is a better place because of the effort that you put into the community that we all love so much. My name is Alyssa Daniel, and I am a proud non-union public school teacher. I have been teaching math, chemistry, physics, and engineering to high school students for 20 years in Newton and in Winthrop. Additionally, I'm a member of the Winthrop community and currently have four sons in the Winthrop Public Schools in grade six, seven, eight, and nine. Last week, I spoke for the first time at the request of a student of mine. I spoke about the importance of relationships in forming lifelong learners and how the deterioration of these important connections is leading to a staggering decline in student engagement and overall mental health. After reflecting on the presentation from the Board of Health last Tuesday, I was disappointed to discover that there was little to no time spent addressing the very serious issue of mental health. The lack of discussion on this topic has compelled me to write this letter as a community member. I have 20 years of experience with teenagers, and I take the topic of mental health very seriously. Having to sit at services for students that have committed suicide changed my perspective regarding the severity of mental health crisis among teenagers. Teen suicide is everywhere. It is stigmatizing to talk about it, but it does not go away. You do not have to search very far on the internet to uncover countless studies regarding the dramatic increase in mental health issues going on among teenagers due to remote learning. Depression and anxiety is at an all-time high. Hospitalizations of teenagers has increased, and according to an article in Psychology Today, published in September of 2020, teenagers are facing a suicide pandemic. According to the CDC, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among high school-aged youth 14 to 18 after unintentional injuries, and that statistic was before COVID and remote learning. When you read studies, the most affected students come from the most vulnerable populations. Disproportionately, they are female, minority, non-heterosexual, and low-income students. These are voiceless students, and I am here as a community member of Winthrop to be their voice. They need to be in school. The government is telling us to send them back to school. The CDC is telling us to send them back to school. Parents are asking you to send them back to school, and students are calling you to go back to school. Remote learning is doing far more hurt than good, and it is time to give students and families a choice. Last week, there was a parent that spoke about equity, and there was just a moment ago, and I was reminded of an important lesson. Fair is not equal. As a community member, we have to all make sacrifices to balance out and mitigate risk to those that do not stop at the door at COVID-19 and asynchronous learning at the elementary school level.
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up because we have a lot of people waiting. I'm sorry to do that to you. I know you're making a point. I want you to wrap that up.
Yeah, I'm almost finished. The mental health crisis among teenagers is real and will have lifelong effects on countless students across the globe, contributing to a dropout rate among high school students that will take generations to recover from. The education gap grows wider each day between the haves and the have-nots, and it is time for us as a community to stand up for the voiceless students and get them back in school. Give them hope. Keep the date. Please let us open our doors on December 7th. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Patty, any further public comment?
Yes. Brooklyn Banfield.
Good evening. My name is Brooklyn Banfield, and I'm in eighth grade at the Winthrop Middle School. I have two other siblings in Winthrop Schools. I'm reaching out to all you tonight to let you know that if you look at some students, students, they look completely fine and are doing well in school. I myself am doing very well academ- academically, but not so very well mentally. I find it very hard to focus. In the beginning, I actually found it fun to be home and not have to get up to go to school. At this point, I'm finding it very hard to even get out of bed or get motivated to attend school. I have never met my eighth-grade teachers, and at this point, I feel like I never will. My siblings and I just wanted to say that we miss school and our teachers and our friends. You may look happy on the screen, but we are trying to hold it together. Please, and I, please open our schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Patty?
Yep, we have Robert DiMarco.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's actually Karen DiMarco on my husband's computer.
Thank you.
I'm a mom of two girls in the second and fifth grade. I'd like to address two items that came up during the Joint School Committee Board of Health meeting last week. The first is the notion that kids in the younger grades are doing great in our current remote model. A couple of teachers in the GFB and the ATC schools called in to say that their students are just thriving. Please remember that just because a child shows up and does the work does not mean they are thriving. It could simply mean that they are hiding their stress, anxiety, and sadness from the computer screen. Despite having two amazing teachers this year, remote learning has had negative effects on both of my children and taken a toll on our whole family. I asked my 10-year-old if she'd like to share her thoughts on remote learning with all of you, and she agreed. The following was written by my daughter in the fifth grade. Dear School Committee, My name is Haley. I think that we should go back to school this December because we're not learning as much as we should. We would have much better education if we went back. We haven't seen our friends in so long, and it is very sad. We deserve better education and to see our friends face-to-face. That's why I think we should go back to school. Haley DiMarco. The second item I want to address from last week is the excellent point made by committee member Barry, who said that we are only looking at one side of the story, which is the community's COVID-19 statistics. Another committee member countered and said that wasn't true, but let me ask you. If the overall well-being of our kids really is a factor here, then why isn't there a pediatrician or a mental health expert on standby for each one of these meetings? I understand that the knowledge and the expertise brought in by Meredith is appropriate and potentially necessary to inform your decisions, but the only people talking about the detrimental effects of this remote model are us parents and some of the students themselves. Please hear us. Many of our kids are not all right. I'm asking that you move forward with the current plan to begin the hybrid model on December 7th. We deserve the right to choose an in-person education for our children. Please give us hope. Keep the date. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Adriana Barbarisi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Adriana Barbarisi. I'm a senior at Winthrop High School. I've always been someone who loves school. I used to wake up every morning eager to learn, see my teachers and my friends. Now I wake up five minutes before my classes, dreading the day ahead, knowing that the day will end with three hours of homework and a pounding headache. Despite all that, I still show up to my classes with a smile on my face. I think that teachers get the smile confused with liking remote learning. I smile because I know that my teachers are working tirelessly to try to give us the best education. Students have dealt with the struggles of remote learning because there was no other option, and now there is. Schools haven't been encouraged to go hybrid by not only the governor, but by the CDC director. Why are we the only ones that are still waiting? It's time to listen to the students and the parents who have been fighting tirelessly to open the doors. Give us hope. Keep the date. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
We have... Oh, um, there's someone named Jamie, but she has the old version of Zoom, so I'm gonna move to Karen Chavez.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Karen.
Karen.
Um, for the past few months, I have listened to all the pros and cons of the school reopening. I have come to the conclusion that there is no right time. It will be an obstacle until this pandemic is over and a vaccine is available to everyone. The Board of Health presentation was fine, but I don't feel that there was any new information given. You, the school committee, asked for recommendation from them. Instead, they voted not to have schools open until January. That date will come, and because of the holidays, with a projected increase in positive testing, the date of January 4, 2021, will again be postponed. As I said at the start, there is no right time. We need to take a stand, trust the students, that they will follow all the restrictions of being back in school. From all I have heard from the elementary parents calling in to this meeting and prior school committee meetings, they are satisfied with the remote learning module. Two educators, Connie Grayson and John Lu Cherry, for whom I have the utmost respect for, knowing them professionally and personally, have stated their experience has been a positive one. Mrs. Turner, a kindergarten teacher at the Gorman Fort Banks, said her kindergarten class is also doing very well with remote. Bernadette Housley, grade six teacher at the middle school, said her Lions are doing well with remote learning, another respected educator. With the high school students are not faring as well without remote learning. They need to get back to the classroom. You heard this from Sophia Vitale, Jenna Dorr, Maridore, and Grace Glorius. All seniors at Winthrop High School were missing out on the academics, socialization, sports, and the needed camaraderie for mental stability. Alyssa Dagno, lead teacher at Winthrop High School, made an eloquent presentation on why the kids should go back. If the elementary level is okay, leave them be. The parents who called in had nothing but positive remarks. On the other hand, high school parents are not happy. If the high school parent chooses to continue remote for their students, that is their choice. But give the high school students and their parents who want a hybrid schedule their choice as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you for your comments.
Carla Vitale.
Hi there, everyone. How are you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Usually you folks that know me know I have a lot to say, but tonight I yield for my daughter. She's not able to be on the call. So I'm reading this on behalf of my daughter, Sophia. My name is Sophia Vitale, and I'm a senior at Winthrop High School. Sadly, I couldn't attend the meeting tonight, but wanted to make sure my voice was heard. I'm speaking again for my classmates and myself. I believe we deserve better. I attend these meetings every week because I have hope that we will have the opportunity to go back to school, like many other communities have done. My main concern with remote learning is that when I attend my first year of college next year, that I will be behind many of the other students who have had in-person learning. We've been out of school since March, and this is not okay for me. Along with that, many students use school as an escape and for the many resources that the school provides. I did not get to mention this at the last meeting due to the time limit, but I want to put emphasis on the fact that the school just doesn't provide students with education, but also with resources such as guidance counselors and adjustment counselors. With not being in school, it is very difficult to speak your mind and find solutions through the computer. Many students struggle with mental health, and even more so now. I have personally had these experiences, and I know it will be much more beneficial for me if I am in school in person. Forgive me. Also, the amazing resources at school are always available and free, which is also so awesome, and the kids need this now. I just want to make notice that our teachers are doing great, and I'm extremely grateful for them for waking up every day and going to school and dealing with us kids because we know how hard it is with remote learning to even get out of bed. I really hope that you all take into consideration all of our voices and to keep the date for going back to school. We need in-person learning. It is essential. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sophia, through Carla.
Next, we have, oh, I'm sorry, Chloe Robson. Um, Chloe, you're on an old version of Zoom. You, you might have to try to call, call in. And that is the same for Katie Gagnon. The same for Reese Broden. And here we have Todd Sacco.
Hello. Thank you again for the time. I just want to kind of restate some things I said last time because it's worth repeating. My first concern here is, uh, has to do with Governor Baker and, and the, the Commissioner of Education, Riley, I think his name is. We were told incessantly by some members of this committee and by the administration that we need to follow the protocols, we need to follow the guidelines. I don't understand why that's changing now. I mean, maybe someone might answer a question about how we reconcile this at some point during this meeting because I'm very curious about that. Um, I'm also heard that people don't want to be responsible for a kid getting sick and passing away or bringing it home to grandma, whatever. And I don't want to be dark about this. I mean, we're in a pandemic, but when the CDC and the American Associations of Pediatricians say kids are safe in school, not to mention the countless pediatricians and doctors that say the same thing, you really got to listen to the science. Like, this is about listening to the science, so I, I implore you to do that. With regard to the obstacles about, well, we'll be on vacation and, and people will be home with their families and getting sick, that excuse can come up in February vacation and April vacation as well. Uh, we said earlier that there's never gonna be a good time. It's true. We want our kids back in school. We are the taxpayers. These are our children. We did vote for you, obviously, but we're asking you to go with the popular vote. Please give the kids hope and stay with the date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacco.
Yes. Gifenge.
Hi, my name is Abby Gifenge, and I'm a fifth-grade student at the ATC. I have two brothers that are in the second and eighth grade. I think we need to go back to school because remote learning is affecting our education and socialization with other children. Plus, we are experiencing too much time in front of the computer. Many other school systems have returned to school successfully. It's time for Winthrop to do the same. Give us hope. Keep the date. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment.
Robert DiMarco.
Hey, guys. It's, it's actually me this time, not my wife. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Just, just two points I'd like to make quickly. Sorry, I'm a little emotional after Abby just spoke, so, um, uh, two things, really. First off, uh, one thing that Astrid touched on was that the biggest transmission risk was from teacher to teacher. And I wanted to point out that the teachers are already in school, so that risk is already in place. Um, the second thing I wanted to point out is my kid, my youngest daughter goes to FKO. She goes four days a week. Uh, she needs a classroom setting. That's what she needs. And FKO is not school. Let's be clear about that. There are completely different rules in place for an after-school program or a daycare center than there are for schools. My daughter's program is in the EB Newton. It's a 110-year-old building. So I guess, I guess my question for the school committee is this. Is my daughter safer in the EB Newton, which is a 110-year-old building? Or is she safer in the new schools like the Cummings or the Fort Banks School? Because that is what we, uh, that's, that's the decision we have to make. You know, we, both me and my wife work. We have to do something with our children. So my child is learning in essentially a building that was so outdated, I had to go to the Willis School because EB Newton was too old. She's learning in the EB Newton. She's doing remote learning in the EB Newton, while there are teachers teaching one building away with the best-of-air systems, the, it's, it's unbelievable. Like, i- if you would, if you had told somebody this a year ago, they never would have believed it. Yeah, my kid's learning on a computer in the EB Newton while teachers are teaching in the Cummings School with no kids. Um, obviously, I'm emotional. Um, you know, it's, this has been hard for all of us. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. DiMarco.
Okay. Anita Preble.
Hi. Um, I hadn't decided to speak until the last minute, but I am a mental health professional. I've been working with children and families for 27 years, and the last 16 I've been here in the Cummings School. Um, I want to say that I totally agree with people that, um, remote learning is not easy on children. It's not easy on families. It can lead to feelings of isolation, and it's difficult to, to manage and learn the information. However, given the current hybrid situation, um, with the, with the COVID, and when children re- return in the hybrid mode, it's not gonna be the school that they used to go to, where they're not gonna be able to play together. They're gonna have to stay six feet apart at their desks. They're not gonna be able to socialize and do all the things that, that most people are talking about. Because of the COVID situation, we have to maintain that distance. My other concern is that one of the, the most challenging things for children in terms of anxiety and stress is transition. So to go from the remote situation they're in now and then go to hybrid, which means two days in school and three days out of school, back at home, if there were to be an outbreak, then they would have to go back to remote. That's another transition. And then after a couple of weeks, then maybe they could come back to hybrid. There's another transition. Every transition is a challenge for children. It makes, it increases stress and anxiety. It makes them feel uncomfortable. They're not sure what's going on. So obviously, we all wish that the children could come back and just be like they used to, but that's just not possible right now due to the, the pandemic. So I just want people to be aware of the fact that the children are gonna continue to experience stress and anxiety, whether they're doing hybrid or whether they're remote at home. And my biggest concern of all is that, God forbid, someone they know in the school, a student or staff member, should become ill and become seriously ill or pass away. That is gonna be the greatest emotional, um, distress that they could possibly endure. So I just want people to think about that clearly, what kind of an emotional impact it would have on the children to experience somebody actually passing away from this virus. So in that case, the children would be terrified to return to school. So I just wanted to share that information. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Anita. Okay, we're, we're coming dangerously close to 30 minutes that's allowed under our policy for, uh, public comment. I don't want to shut it off, but if there are people that, that their positions already been made clear, um, through other comments, I would ask that you yield to people that have not spoken or their positions haven't been heard.
Okay, we have Jenna Dorr.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Tonight, I would like to share with you all the results of a mental health survey that I created. Students at Winthrop High School are struggling learning remote, and our mental health is at risk. This is an important factor to take into consideration as suicide is the lead, second-leading cause of death amongst people ages 10 to 24. COVID-19 is a real risk, but so is our mental health. There were 130 students who participated in this survey and answered questions regarding their mental health over the past few months. The results are very concerning, and I am worried about myself and my peers. I unfortunately am not able to present the slideshow that I prepared for you tonight, but I would like to share with you the results from this survey. Forty-nine point two percent of students from Winthrop High School are experiencing anxiety daily, and 16.9% of students have experienced anxiety. Thirty-four point six percent of students have feelings of depression daily, and 22.3% of students have had feelings of depression. Forty-three point one percent of students are experiencing loneliness daily, and 20% of students have experienced loneliness. Forty-three point eight percent of students have experienced sadness daily, and 19.2% of students have experienced sadness at times. Sixty-one point five percent of students are not motivated to learn daily, and 13.8% of students have had feelings of being not motivated to learn at times. We are a data-driven society and should be extremely concerned with this data. These results are a huge red flag, and there is clearly an issue within our community. Personally, I can say that I am suffering. Personally, I can say that I am suffering. I am worried and you should be too. Give us hope, keep the date. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenna. Thank you for that comment.
Uh, we have Kathleen.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Capuccio. Patty, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Um, I am the parent of a twelve, fourteen, and sixteen-year-old. One of the, this was not in my original comments, but something I think absolutely needs to be addressed was something that Ms. Preble just discussed with regard to children going back to school and transitions. And then something happening to maybe their grandparent or someone in their home getting sick. I think that forecasting in trying to stymie people speaking is grossly inappropriate. Our children are suffering because they are not at school. Alyssa D'Anio had spoken about the suicide rates. They are real. Julie DiMarco, or Barry, sorry, had spoken last week about the lack of attention for mental and emotional health. And it's accurate. It is not being discussed on this board. It's real. Children are suffering. The CDC and Desi and the governor have stated that our students need to go back to school. We have heard ad nauseam when we listen to these school committee meetings, that they were that you you are trying to follow Desi. Follow the governor. Don't change lanes now. Desi and the governor are saying, get our children back to school. That is the guidance. I'm hearing, like most of us do in our beautiful small town of Winthrop, that some members of the school committee wanna change their vote for going back to school due to the Board of Health discussion. The Board of Health, which has no infectious disease expert, has no practicing physician, and they're an advisory board.
Kathleen, I I I hate to interrupt you. We just have so many and we we're allowing for three minutes. If you could just kinda wrap up.
I'll do my best. They're an advisory board. If you, as a school committee member, change your vote to not go back to school, that's your decision. I'd also like to discuss very quickly the comment period. As many of you on the school committee have mentioned, we are in a pandemic. You're in uncharted territories, as are we. Let's allow people to speak. Let's allow students who are stepping out of their comfort zones to speak. Let's not stymie public comments. Again, we're in a pandemic. Thank you.
I agree. That's why we're trying to get everyone in to speak. Um, next up, thank you, Kathleen, for your comments.
Next, we have um, Elizabeth Cufold Jones.
Yep, and um, I did speak last week and I also wanted to speak this week. Um, I I just wanna point out, I do have a PhD in child development and I do do research in education too, so this is an area that I have some some background and knowledge in. Um, and I just wanted to reiterate one thing that Mrs. Preble said. Is that the classrooms do not look like the classrooms that the children remember. The high school students, the elementary school students, the middle school students. I think it was um, Counselor Boncorry, I believe you showed a picture last week of the teachers in the full um, PPE gear. Uh, this is not gonna be the same experience and yes, uh, it is important for them to get social and emotional support. I, you know, there are ways of doing that remotely, just as there are ways of teaching remotely. Um, and and the t- schools have been doing a great job. My my daughters have been reached out to by both the Gorman Fort Banks and the ATC schools in that regard. Um, but I would just make everybody very aware that these classrooms do not look the same. The behavior of the children is not going to be the same. It's not gonna be all of us on the playground playing around together, eating lunches and stuff like that. And I think that's really important because that is gonna be traumatizing in its own way for for children. Um, and with regards to what the data says about schools and no transmission rate um, happening in schools, I would just put a word of caution out there about that data, which is that the schools that have returned so far are primarily schools that are private schools or schools in in wealthier areas. Um, you're not getting the full spectrum of the data. You're not getting a full representative data set right there to be able to say that's not gonna happen in schools. And so I would I would just put a word of caution with that because it's not a representative data set about of what it w- will look like when we do go back to school. But with all that said, you know, I, you know, will be remote if we return right away, but if we do wait for a period of time um, for this wave to to pass, I would love to be able to send my children back um, to to school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. See, I'm trying to get, oh, here's Reese Broden.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Reese Broden. I'm a fourteen-year-old freshman at Winter High School in the class of twenty-twenty-four's Vice President. Since being virtual, I've been feeling a disconnection with my peers. This is my first year at Winter Public Schools. I haven't really gotten the chance to know my peers. I have felt tired every day to attend my Zooms. My eyes continue to hurt all day from looking at my screen and I never have motive motivation to attend school each morning. Every day I wake up at seven fifty, knowing class starts at seven fifty-five. I hope very soon that I can be excited to wake up early, get dressed, and go to school. My brother currently attends B.C. High and goes to school one week on and one week off. I've seen him excel while in the hybrid model and have seen them do this successfully despite being a school of fifteen hundred students. Me and my classmates just want to be given the chance that the governor has suggested is in the best interest of students. Also, since we are listening to the CDC to wear masks and socially distant and stay socially distant, we should also lis- listen to them to let us go back to school. Thank you for allowing me to speak this afternoon.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Next, we have Katie Gagnon.
Hello, my name is Katie Gagnon and I'm a senior at Winter High School. We need to return to the classroom. At the same, at the high school level, students are unmotivated. We spend six and a half hours trying to focus online just to log right back on to complete hours of additional homework. The fully remote model is unsustainable and putting our education at a disadvantage. Schools all over the country have reopened. In fact, the state expects us to be learning in person. Students learning online can't compete with students learning in person. We're falling behind. Not opening Winthrop schools is doing the students a disservice. I'm a student who genuinely enjoys learning, but now find myself counting down the minutes until each class is over. It's impossible to remain engaged and focused sta- staring at the screen all day. I'm an essential worker and report to work in person every shift. Teachers should have the same responsibility. Give us hope, keep the date.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Okay, next we have um, Jean Holgerson.
Hello there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, how are you all? So before I I say my speech, I just wanna um, give you kinda some updates. So I did reach out to Meredith Hurley last week and we have developed a volunteer task force of two NPs and three RNs. Um, and we, I know I sent you all an email about this and you know, but I'd like the community to know too. We are actively working on contact tracing uh, with that. Um, and and just quickly to speak to the date of December seventh, you know, with the CDC has the guideline saying that um, after exposure, which would be Thanksgiving Day, December seventh would be ten days. And now we have this fantastic task force that's gonna be all over this. Uh, so I'm confident that we can mitigate any kind of um, concerns that we might have on that date and and hold people back for the second date before I speak. Um, but as a nurse practitioner in the community dealing with primary care uh, in Winthrop, I've had numerous, um, at least daily, I have one, if not two, uh, seniors actually coming in depressed. And these are um, you know, they're, I'm putting them on, you know, Zoloft and they're very, very depressed. Um, so I did uh, work with Jenna a little bit and I wanna speak out on the survey. Um, and again, I experience this daily because I am a nurse practitioner in our community. Um, students, um, that we have an increased rate of of suicide going on. We have a national crisis and Meredith and I have discussed this. Uh, there aren't a lot of, there's not a lot of data out there yet because the wound is still open. Um, you know, remember at nine eleven when we, you know, we were all depressed and we had anxiety and and PTSD? Well, we were able to gather together at synagogues and churches and and together to 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 join and to heal. We're not able to do that. This is salt in an open wound every single day for these kids. The PTSD is not going away and the ramifications that are gonna happen to these kids is gonna happen for years and years. We have no idea the impact. Um, but as you know, there was a mental health um, survey that was connected last week and the results should be very concerning to everyone here. Winthrop children have identified they are having overwhelming negative mental impact to remote learning and being out of school. They are suffering and this is a cry for help. I hope everyone is listening. Anxiety was reported at sixty-six point one percent. Our kids in Winthrop, out of a hundred and thirty kids, there are many more that we haven't tapped into. And mental health, Lisa, this should be another discussion on how to bring mental health into into the school system. I know you guys have a contract with North Suffolk Mental Health. I've spoken with their director and I am on board to help in any way I can. Um, depression is fifty-six point nine percent in our school. Loneliness, sixty-three point one. Lack of motivation, seventy-five point three. Fatigue, eighty-two point four. What are the warning signs of depression and suicide? I'll let you know. Okay, there's sadness, hopelessness, withdrawal from friends and family, loss of activity, uh, loss of interest in activities, changes in eating and sleeping behaviors. We have a lot of people with eating disorders right now because they're trying to gain control. I know numerous. Lack of enthusiasm and motivation, fatigue, lack of energy, and difficulty concentrating. We need to wake up. We are having a mental health crisis right here in this town. The risk for suicides have been um, having a sense of hopelessness about the future and a sense of hopelessness. Remember, these students are hopeless. They don't even know when they're going back to school. They're so uncertain about their future. And trust me, I know that everyone is concerned about the coronavirus, but we have protective measures on how to protect and and prevent this. But what you, if we lose one child to suicide in Winthrop under eighteen, no one will ever be able to give forgive themselves. And with this data right now, this is where we're heading. We need to mitigate this and we need to stop them.
You you're only the three minutes.
As a healthcare professional, I'm extremely concerned with the results and Winthrop is in danger. I am an advocate to the vulnerable population that we have of Winthrop. Our community cannot handle one suicide. It would de- it would devastate us. Coronavirus is a real threat, but the other real threat is teenage suicide. It's about time we consider both health concerns. I know this is a tough decision, but our teenagers' lives depend on this. Please make the right choice. Give us hope, keep the date.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, um, I can't get Jeff Kelly on. I think he's got the old version of Zoom. Same with Anika Holgerson. Here is Suzanne Leonard.
Hi, um, I also spoke um, last week, so I will make this really brief. I, it's heartbreaking hearing from our teens, hearing about their um, mental state. Um, I really just urge what I urged last week. If we could just consider this school district or school by school, I think the needs of our teenagers are very clear. You know, I, as I said, I think those needs are very clear, but I also think uh, to compare the needs of five-year-olds and sixteen-year-olds, it's just not the same ballgame. And so I would really urge you, if that's possible, I don't know what, how your by laws work and such, but if it is possible, open up the high school. Uh, the, obviously, those kids need it. Um, but please rethink this for the for the um, Fort Banks School at least, which is obviously where my child resides. Um, I, this, as I said last week, having this be a one-size-fits-all thing seems really, really wrong. Um, we're wronging our children. We're sort of damned if we do, damned if we don't, but we're wronging our children if we if we um, apply a one-size-fits-all measure. So if at all possible in your laws, I'd really encourage you to do this on a school-by-school basis in consultation with the principals of those schools. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comment.
Next, we have um, Cheryl Peolini.
It's uh, Lauren's gonna speak. She's just using her computer. Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um, so my name is Lauren Peolini and I am a member of the WHS class of twenty-sixteen. So I've been graduated for a few near years now. I have suffered from anxiety and depression my entire life and I was at my lowest probably when I was a student at Winthrop High School. Again, I could go on about this topic, but I'll keep it short for the sake of time. Mental health issues do not begin and end with virtual learning. Going back to school is not an automatic cure for mental health conditions. My recommendation is for the school administration and school committee and even parents to start investing now in mental health resources that are accessible to all students in the WH, in the Winthrop school system, virtually as well as in person. I also recommend that these resources stay available long after this pandemic is over. One of the people who supported me in my mental health journey during high school was Mrs. Howard. So I can assure you firsthand that her opinion and recommendations on going back to school are of value and she prioritizes the wellness of students. Of course, virtual learning is not ideal for anyone. But I would like to remind everyone that you should not have to sacrifice either your mental health or your physical health for the other. Right now, it is not feasible to have in-person learning. That would be a huge risk to the physical health of others, uh, physical health of teachers, administration, and students. I would be the first person to admit that this pandemic has had a negative effect on many people's mental health, myself included. Therefore, I strongly feel we need to put in place resources and extra support for mental health, mental health of Winthrop Public School students now, even if that be virtually. Even if students are to return to in-person learning, it will not be as they remember. They will be distanced with masks on. This is a real-life situation and an opportunity to teach the youth of this community to cope in healthy ways when the state of the world is not ideal. As someone whose mental health issues began long before this pandemic, I can tell you that it does not get better with the flip of a switch or simply going back to in-person learning. It's an investment and it takes time to improve. So I urge you to start now. There's no reason we can't support the mental health of Winthrop students virtually. This isn't a competition between COVID and mental health. Let's learn to cope with both of them. We are all commenting via Zoom right now for a reason. My mom Cheryl, who you just heard from, is a fourth-grade teacher at the Arthur T. Cummings School. I have watched her retirelessly after school on weekends to support her class in a remote setting. She delivers groceries to my eighty-four-year-old grandmother weekly. Her health, as well as my mom's, is of my utmost concern. And I would like to remind everyone that even if we give students and parents a choice of whether to return to in-person learning, the teachers do not have that luxury.
I hate, I hate to cut you off, but if you could just wrap it up.
That was everything. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Next, we have Gillian Texara.
Hi, um, for those of you who don't know, I'm a part of the ATC PTO as well as a parent of a child at the ATC and the middle school. Um, I'm calling in because I really am hoping that you guys can take a breath and I hate that it is the go-back-now or wait till January or wait till forever. There's gotta be a situation where we can find a common ground. This is not a one-size-fits-all for each of my for each of my kids, let alone each of the schools. I really think what works in the high school versus what works at the fort is not the same. I also think the dismissal and arrival procedures for the fort and the ATC are gonna be crazy and are gonna need to be worked out. And I don't think they're gonna work the first day we go back. Um, I would love to see you guys wait until January seventh. I'm very nervous about the holidays and this current time. But I'm also concerned about equity. I'm at the end of the alphabet. I have a feeling that my kids will be in the second cohort, which means they're only gonna get four days where the other cohort will get six and then we'll be the first ones back. I also don't see why we can't do something like Salem, where they brought one grade per school back just to try it, to see how it went. Um, and I will say that listening to what Ms. Turner said about her classroom hurts so much because my son had her and her t- classroom was gorgeous and such a community learning. And I do fear for my kids going back because it's And I do fear for my kids going back because it's not going to be the same and I think that's going to be a severe shock. And I think they need to get prepared for it. But as I said, I really hope you can break this down and not see it as one size and one school and one grade. It's really different for each of them and that we're going to need time to tweak what's going on as well. And thank you so much for your time and thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you for your comment.
Next we have Rosemary McCarthy.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rosemary McCarthy. I am a STEM teacher at the Winthrop Middle School, a 30-year veteran of the Winthrop Public Schools. I have taught in every building that exists in the district as of now. I'm very concerned that there is a coalition of people who are making a coordinated effort to forecast mass suicide without real data. You have to pay attention to the real science, to the real data, not a amateur poll of people. Particularly a poll that is given by and taken by the same people who really want to go back to school. You can't say that that is valid data. My second comment is you have to understand that going back to school is not going to be like school usually is. It is not going to be much different at all than it is sitting at home in your bedroom or your living room. Except you will be in a room with more people with whom you cannot have any direct contact. You can't touch anybody. You cannot share materials. You cannot even look anybody in the eye because you have to face forward at all times in the same direction so that when you speak and others speak, you don't spew what could potentially be virus-laden air on others. You won't even be able to get up to sharpen your pencil. Only one person in a bathroom at a time. When you eat your lunch, you will be sitting in the same types of chairs as you sit in your classroom. Sit distance by six feet with your mask off only long enough for you to eat your lunch. You will not be able to converse with others around you. These are the realities. If you go back to play sports in high school, it is not going to look like the same games that you usually play. The rules have changed significantly. You need to do the research and find out what the school is really going to look like. Please base your opinions on what the reality is, what the data is. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, we're treading dangerously close to an hour of public comment. We do have a lot of business to do this evening. So again, if you're just going to mirror what another position is, I would ask that you yield your time to someone that has not spoken or raised an issue. Ms. Robson.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Chloe Robson and I'm a senior at Winthrop High School. I want to start off by saying I appreciate all of the hard work everyone involved has been putting into the structure and safety of this school year. However, as a student going to these classes at normal hours, five days a week, I can attest personally to the negative effects it has had on me, my classmates and all of the students participating, no matter the age. Mental health is at an all-time low for myself and hundreds of others. I am a seventeen-year-old student who is trying to adapt to sitting home alone five days a week while staying motivated through the piling work and constant headaches and keeping a social life and a time-consuming in-person work schedule. Applying to college and making life-changing decisions practically on my own with little to no help from administration is not ideal nor easy. Online learning was a great temporary fix in the beginning, however, it is no longer effective for the students. If other communities can safely go back, so can we. We, the students, are suffering. If the adults in our community can eat in a restaurant, the children in our community can get a proper, effective education following strict guidelines. This is not an issue of missing social events. This is our educations and futures online. Give us hope. Keep the date. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next we have Ray Leonardo.
Thank you Chairman Perrin and School Committee members. First off, I want to say how proud I've heard a lot of, I'm a teacher at the high school and I've heard a lot of former students and students that I know in the building and I'm really proud that they're speaking tonight on the position that they have. And you know, I think these are strong democratic norms that I think should be protected and cherished and I'm glad that they're participating in their democracy. I'll keep this brief because a lot of folks have spoke on similar positions. One thing that's concerned me over the last few years nationally, and I've seen it creep in unfortunately in the local communities, is a rise in distrust or renouncing outright renouncing of experts. An expert that I've trusted through this pan-
Sorry, we've lost your audio. Mr. Leonardo, we've lost your audio.
I don't know what happened there.
Okay, maybe we can come back around because we have so many. Can we go on to the next and we'll take Mr. Leonardo on a turn?
Yes, I, okay, next we have Jill Tolan.
Hi, folks. I'm going to keep this very short. Just wanted to say I'm a third grade teacher at the ATC. And I wanted to just point out that in my understanding of the hybrid situation, kids will actually be getting less synchronous learning time with teachers. And I think that that is the part that really, people really struggled with spring is that asynchronous time. I'd also like to echo about the trauma-informed part of this where we might be taking kids out of, in the elementary level, out of the classrooms that they have been in all these months and throwing them with other kids. And I just, I feel like we need to have, you know, some more, some more time to think about that and then also just planning the actual date around the holidays. To me makes sense for transitionally for them as well to be coming back after they normally would be coming back, you know, after a winter break. And I just also want to appreciate all the students that I've heard. I think that's amazing that all those kids, all those students are participating. I know when I was a teenager, there's no way you would catch me speaking out in front of all these people. So that's all and thank you so much for hearing my comment.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Okay, I have, let me bring Ray back in there. Ray, can you hear us?
Yes, Patty. Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what happened, but you got cut off.
So as I was saying, we need to trust experts. We need to be data-driven. And, and I trust that the committee has focused on that, you know, masks work. Dr. Fauci told us that schools should be open as long as they are safe to do so. And that's what science will tell us. But what recent studies have shown is that although schools may not be causes of community spread, they might not be the start of community spread. High community spread will seep into the schools. It's inevitable, no matter how strong our protocols are in the district and each individual building, no matter whether it's a MERV 13 filter or not, this will happen. I understand that it's hard to have your children at home as parents. I want you guys and everyone in the community to know that it's not teachers versus parents. It's not teachers versus students. We're all in this together trying to make the best decision for the community. I want my class back. We all do. We want kids in front of us. It's been really hard to teach to a wall of students that start to just look like cartoons on a screen. It's frustrating and I appreciate and I understand how it feels for the student. It probably feels very similar. I love my students. I love Winthrop. But there are no second chances with this. All it takes is, no matter what the probability may or may not be, it's not zero. And all it takes is for one person, whether it be staff, whether it be faculty, administration or a student to come down with this virus. Many will recover just fine. Others will not. And at some point, that person in the latter group will be somebody from Winthrop High School, Winthrop Middle School or the elementary schools. Children under 14 are less likely to contract or maybe even develop complications. But the group of students that I teach at the high school are just as likely as adults. So yes, adult-to-adult transmission may be more likely. But as most of us teachers know, we spend a lot less time with each other than we do with children. And in my case, the children I'm talking about and I see every day are two years away from becoming adults, having the ability to drive, vote. It's our right to work in a safe environment. We'll be in close proximity, six feet or not. We'll be in close proximity with those who are just as likely to transmit as our coworkers. And as I wrap up here.
I was going to ask you to wrap up, Mr. Leonardo.
I will wrap up right now. All I ask is that the committee look at the larger picture. My anxiety is high. I've dealt with depression. I can empathize with students who are struggling with mental health. I've counseled many of them informally, impromptu, because that's what teachers do, particularly at the middle school and high school level, when you earn the trust of some of these students. I understand that, but let's not turn a stressful situation, a problematic situation into a traumatic situation. I had a friend who committed suicide. That's not stressful. That's not, I'm stuck at home anxiety. That's a traumatic event. We don't want to deal with anybody dying in the community, particularly students or faculty members that are beloved by this group of people here and by everybody on this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonardo. I really want to give everyone an opportunity, but again, we're, we've got business to attend to this evening, so.
Okay, well, I have Stephen Prullo and then I have, I have eight more people in the queue.
Okay, we'll cut it off with the eight that are in the queue.
Hello.
Yes.
Hello, I'm a senior at Winthrop High School. My name is Stevie Prullo. And like the rest of the seniors at Winthrop High School, I'm in the process of applying to colleges right now. And it's just the icing on the cake for like this horrible situation. I chose my rigorous course selection this year with the hopes of having a better chance to go to the college of my choice. However, this has been nearly impossible due to our online situation. January 4th is way too late for us to receive any kind of help with our college applications and we need to be back in school by December 7th. Asking me and my fellow classmates to sit in front of a computer screen and have undivided attention for six hours, then have hours of homework after is absurd. As a student who has had extreme dedication to achieving higher learning throughout my life, I can confidently say having the integrity to do well this school year has been almost impossible. My heart breaks for my friends who have had mental health issues and are alone right now, feeling no hope whatsoever. The only hope that they are feeling is to go back to school, so please give us hope and keep the date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prullo.
Next we have Krista Shea.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me? Okay, so my name's Krista Shea. I am a member of the PTO at Fort Banks and also at the middle school. I have three students, one at the Fort Banks, the middle school and the high school. I'm also a teacher in PBD and I teach at the Higgins Middle School, which is one of the largest middle schools in Massachusetts. We have been back in hybrid model since September with all of our students. Yes, it looks different, but our kids are still communicating. They're still talking with each other. We have outside mask breaks. They have painted the ground for them. They can still socialize. They're not on top of each other, but they're allowed to do it. And I know a lot of people are coming on saying, oh, they're going to be scared. It's going to look different. Yes, it's going to look different, but they need it. They need to be back. I've scaled back my teaching this year because I know I'm not going to make it through all of this curriculum because I need to also focus on their wellbeing when they're there with me. I can tell you, I'm coming home and reteaching my kids here, just like I'm teaching my students at school. Because I have to go back and reteach because they're getting so much thrown at them in a class period that they can't keep up with it because they can't ask the questions that they need to ask because it's through a computer. So I'm encouraging you to allow these kids to come back to school. They deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next we have Bob Carroll.
Yes, hello. I'll be very brief. Bob Carroll, precinct six, father of two children in the Winthrop school system. Cases are rising and the holidays will cause a spike. Many schools, public and private, around the country are either staying or shifting into a fully remote model as the holidays approach. I do not see the reason to rush back to school for a few more weeks. And if that could lessen the risks considerably, why don't we do it? I thank you for your time. I do not envy the choice that you're having to make. But I do wish that we wouldn't have to have, you know, a kind of fistfight every three weeks. I just hope we could just kind of move in in three weeks, look at what's going on and just make a decision and use some of this energy to help make life easier for our students and ourselves. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
This is Jamie, who was trying to get in earlier. Jamie? Jamie?
Okay, why don't we rotate Jamie out and if they're able to connect back in, we'll, we'll.
Let's see, we have, no, can't get her in. So that's it. There were people that just can't get in. I don't know if they're on a different Zoom, but Grace Galores, Jill Dorr and Anika Holgerson and Jamie are trying to talk and I can't get them, I can't get their audio. And that's where the eight ended.
Okay, I think we should close out public comment for now. We can reopen at the latter part of the meeting.
Mr. Perrin, did you want me to read the letter?
Oh, if you have a letter, yes, please.
I do have a letter that was asked to be read.
If someone's able to get in, that's already been in.
Okay. "To the school committee and the teachers, I am so disappointed in this board and the lack of resolve in getting our students back in their classrooms. The town deserves better than the constant flip-flopping that has gone on over the last two months. I am sure you realize this has caused incredible anxiety and frustration within the community on both sides of the issue. It has made things worse for families. I would never ask teachers who are at risk to endanger their lives or the lives of loved ones, but the vast majority of teachers are at less, less risk of COVID illness in a school building than anywhere else in society. The CDC has stated that the safest place for students to be is in school. Schools have lower infection rates than the general population. That is the science. The governor has stated that our schools are safe, should be open and transmission is low. That is the state science. Finally, the American Academy of Pediatrics position is that it is more detrimental to the students' health to stay home. That's the medical science. I would say that is a trifecta of federal, state and medical opinion backed by science. I also completely discount the opinion of the Board of Health because of course they would say the safest thing to do is stay home. It would be weird if they recommended anything else. We all know it's safer to stay home, but we can't any longer. The damage to our children is too great. I call on the Board of Health to recognize this and help us get the buildings open instead of telling us why we can't. We also need the school committee and the teachers to step up and help the students of Winthrop and be willing to get the schools open and go back to work as long as it is safe for the teachers individually to do so. Finally, as a teacher, I always thought we practiced emergency drills because we wanted to protect our students in an emergency. Many of us expressed a willingness to put ourselves in harm's way to protect students. I've heard many of my colleagues say so. I know those were not empty words. We don't get to pick our emergencies. They pick us. This is no different. It's how you respond. So far, the only response we have had is fear. I believe we have to face our fear. Our students' mental and physical health, along with their education, are in grave danger and they need you now. I urge the school committee to vote, open the schools on December 7th and I ask the teachers, if you are able, to be there on the 7th for the- to be there on the seventh for the students. Sincerely, Frank DiMarco, twenty-two years former teacher and coach at Winthrop High School.
Thank you. Okay.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Parent, I'm sorry. There were a couple of people that were holding their hands up that wanted to speak that weren't able to, or their hands were put down. Jill Dorr, and I think Annika Holgerson.
Yep, I can't get them in, I can try again.
We've tried.
Yeah, if they're not available because they're using an older version of Zoom.
And, and I, I don't have a problem with, with public comment, we can open it back up at the end. Uh, but we can't hold up the meeting. Uh, we've already gone, uh, almost double the amount of time.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I left Jenna in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Hello?
We're muted. Yes.
Okay. So I just wanna me, I appreciate the fact that you're taking my comment, and I understand that it's going long, but I've been waiting since March, too, so. Um, anyway, I just wanna say that tonight, um, I want to address the mental health issues of the students, we're feeling the detrimental sides of remote learning. I have twin girls, Mara and Jenna, they're in the senior year at Winthrop High School. Remote learning has changed them, and I'm worried about their overall mental health. I'd like to start by saying, a typical day in the life for them last year was June as at Winthrop High School. They would head to school at, uh, at seven fifteen for a student council meeting. They both hold a position on the executive board. At seven fifty-five, they'd go to class and complete a full day of AP and honors courses. After school, they would board a bus and head to a soccer game, where they both played the entire game. Jenna would rush back to Winthrop, uh, fresh back to Winthrop after the game. It'd be a few minutes later rehearsal for the musical. She was, uh, she would arrive in her soccer uniform, still carrying her school belt. Mara would make it home in time to attend an AAU basketball practice. They would both come home sometime around nine PM and do homework, squeeze in dinner, and then shower. Both girls would wake up every morning, eager and excited to do it all over again. Flash forward to now, and the world has turned upside down. Their days consist of waking up ten minutes before school starts and logging onto Zoom. They count down the minutes until class is over. Most times not speaking the entire class. When school is over, one or both head up to bed, fatigued from a long day of nothing. On nice days, they may call friends and spend time outside rollerblading or skateboarding, but it's not the norm. They're not the same people they were last year. I can see sadness and uncertainty on their faces. There doesn't seem to be much for them to look forward to, and every day is a struggle. There are more arguments in our home, and it's hard as their mother not to be able to assure them and tell them that everything will be fine. Both girls put on a smile and get through their days, but not always easily. This has been a particularly hard week for them. They were supposed to be playing in a powder puff football game, participating in their last pep rally. Jenna was supposed to have performed in that annual high school musical, and they should be getting ready for the winter sport season. There are many kids like Jenna and Mara who have undergone serious emotional changes. The mental damage that is being done is no joke. I'm very concerned for both of my daughters, and I miss their old personalities. This is our cry for help, to save these students before it's too late. Other schools have successfully returned to school in sports. They've gone food shopping, they've gone out into the public. Why not Winthrop? Give us hope, keep the date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr..
Hi, I'm also.
Oh, I, I disabled her, and I didn't know there was another person on that line that was gonna speak.
Can you bring them back?
Um. Let me see. Hello? Jill, are you still there?
Hi, this is Mara. I also couldn't speak because my Zoom wouldn't let me in. Is it okay if I speak?
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Mara Dorr, and I am a senior at Winthrop High School. I am struggling with remote learning, and I know my peers are as well. As you heard in my sister's speech, there are so many kids struggling. Some are afraid to speak out. This is a time to stand up for myself and for my classmates. And I am proud of her for making a survey for those who do not feel comfortable to speak tonight. Whether it may be called amateur or not, she is the voice of many students. These past few months of school have been extremely hard, and we are not getting the education we deserve. High school students are just getting by. We are not the same students we once were. Students like me, who have always been passionate about learning, have no drive to succeed. We do the least we can to pass and do not retain any information. I am worried about my education. I am worried for college next year, where I will be in class with students from all over the country who have been learning in person for months. My mental health has taken a toll, and I am very, very lucky that I'm surrounded by such an amazing family and friends to get me through these hard times. The safest place for kids to be is in school. We need to be back in school. We are begging for you to open the doors. We need it. Students are struggling. Give us hope, keep the dates. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think I can get two of the students that were there before. Uh, it looks like their parents' emails might be on here, so.
That's okay.
Okay, let me try to.
Those last two.
Is, is this Anika Holgerson? Yes. Is this Anika?
Hi, hello, yeah, this is, uh, uh, Anika's, um, phone, but this is Sandra Hurley, I'm Mrs. Hurley. I'm a former educator in the Winthrop school system. Um, and as a matter of fact, a couple of you have been my, my former students that are on this committee and administration. Um, I first want to say that schools have not been safe since, since Columbine. So no one said it's safe, this is just a whole different kind of safe. Um, I further want to say that if the Board of Health wants to recommend anything, let them recommend closing the Elks, closing the restaurants, close the yacht clubs where the adults are getting COVID and passing it to their children, cancel the turkey shoot, close everything in town for Thanksgiving if you're too afraid. Okay, that's just my recommendation. And as many people have said tonight, the CDC director has stated repeatedly that schools are not a main driver of community transmission in children. Children are more likely to get this virus outside of the school setting. Um, there's decisions that are being made by this school committee are robbing these children of their education, and they've been talking about that all night long. Um, it's really despicable that, 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 you know, this committee has not or will not make the right decision for this community at this point. Um, I'm not only a former educator of the Winthrop school system, I also am a registered nurse and an owner of the local visiting nurse association in Winthrop. Um, I'm very well aware of communicable diseases and epidemiology, and given the current situation, I fully support the return of students to school immediately. Um, the town of Winthrop is not taking a leadership role in the future of the education of Winthrop students. The students are suffering in a variety of ways, and we've been hearing that all night long. Each one of you, as members representing our town for the education of our Winthrop students, are to produce graduates who are self-confident, self-directed, lifelong learners, who are productive contributors to society. This is your vision.
I have to wrap it up.
I'll, I'll wrap it up, Brian. This is your vision you developed for the Winthrop Public Schools. The committee has not supported its vision for our students. The mission that you all developed as a committee states that the Winthrop Public Schools will provide progressive learning experiences through a rich program of studies and high-quality instruction that educate, develop, and support all students to reach their full potential and appreciate the diversity in our world as conscientious members of our society. As members of the Winthrop School Committee, you have not supported the mission you developed for the students in our town. Your priority as members of the Winthrop School Committee should be to expand and invest in programs and instructional practice that will provide authentic, student-centered learning. Winthrop students are not receiving the best learning opportunities. Your responsibility as members of the Winthrop School Committee is to support the instructional excellence with a shared vision for high-quality outcomes and expectations. Your priority as members should be to create opportunities.
I really have to just wrap it up.
Okay, let me remind you, all right, I will finish up. Let you remind you that the core values that you pers- represent for the town of Winthrop as members of the Winthrop School Committee are pride, success, respect, integrity, dedication, and excellence. And finally, I implore each one of you to examine your own conscience while sitting in your chairs to vote for the children of Winthrop. You owe them your support to institute and promote high-quality education in a safe and welcoming environment. You, you, I trust that you will vote yes for the children of Winthrop as people voted yes for you, when we put our trust in you to support our future, because the children are our future. We voted you in to support our students. Now you must vote the students of Winthrop in. Give us hope, keep the date. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Hurley.
Thank you, Brian.
I think this is Grace Galores. She was, um, in the queue for quite a while and couldn't get on. Is this Grace? Grace?
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, hello?
We can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yes.
This is Ellen Galores, Grace's mother. Uh, hello, and thank you for your time and patience. I have four children in the high school. I'll be brief, Mr. Parent, as I know you're out of time. Remote learning for them is sad, for a lack of a better word. Uh, I've been listening since the beginning of this tonight, and I have counted five comments tonight that have mentioned fear of returning to the school. Out of all the comments, only five. Let those five people and anyone else that chooses to stay home, stay home. I am not scared to say that this is a political pathetic game. We pay our school taxes, we voted for you. My husband and I, we leave our home every day to go to work. Excuse me, I'm sorry. When did teachers become non-essential? Cancers and the regular good old winter flu are scarier and far more riskier than COVID-19. Stay strong, school committee, do the right thing. And Mr. Boncory, your demeanor about being disgusted about people that disagree with you is not okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, I believe that wraps up, we had cut off, uh, public comment, and we're gonna move on to the, uh, rest of our agenda. Okay, general information, recommendations, delegates and visitors, we have none. We have no, uh, minutes to review at this point. They'll be at our next, uh, scheduled meeting. Now we come to financial and business procedures. Uh, warrant SVW twenty-one dash eight in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Can I get a motion for warrant SVW twenty-one dash eight in that amount?
Moved.
So moved, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Barry. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Hames, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swop?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes. Okay, moving on to payroll warrant SPW twenty-one dash zero eight in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, thirty dollars and twenty-three cents. Can I get a ma- a motion for that payroll warrant, please?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swop. Second by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on the payroll warrant? Hearing none, Patty, can I get a call of the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
I abstain.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Then.
Ms. Swop?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Then. Okay, I don't believe we have any budget transfers this evening, is that correct, Ms. Echols?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to buildings and grounds, there are none this evening. There are no subcommittee reports. Superintendent Howard, do you have a superintendent's report this evening?
I do, thank you. Um, just a few items, one of which, um, I'm pretty excited about, which is the use, um, that I'm sure people have noticed on the news and have heard about the BINAX now testing, which is, um, rapid antigen testing uh, in the state of Massachusetts that has been awarded to, I believe it was a hundred and thirty-four um, either school districts or private special education schools in the Commonwealth. Um, the Winthrop Public Schools had applied for BINAX testing, um, and the testing allows school districts to, um, when you have a symptomatic person in your school, whether it's a student or a staff member, to conduct a rapid COVID-19 test in which, um, within about fifteen minutes, you can have a result that you can share, uh, with either the family of a student, uh, or with a staff member. Um, right now, as most know, we have, uh, COVID medical waiting rooms in our schools where if a student or a staff member is symptomatic, uh, they are able to go to that space and have an evaluation by our school nurse uh, to see whether or not, um, the student does have symptoms, and if so, we follow a very specific protocol. Um, this, the addition of the BINAX now test, uh, will allow us to even take that one step further and be able to, um, test students, and, uh, if it's a negative test, potentially return them to the classroom, uh, and the same for the teacher, or if it is a positive test, be able to provide additional, um, support to families and outreach to families on the next steps. So again, a hundred and thirty-four schools, um, or programs were provided uh, with the phase one introduction to this, and Winthrop is one of them. So we are excited about that. Um, it is going to entail, um, a few steps. Uh, we believe that the testing kits will be available in the beginning of January, uh, from the state of Massachusetts. We have to, um, assure them that we have covered a number of, um, items that we, uh, stated to them that we would be able to cover when we did apply for this. Um, things like obtaining, um, uh, an order from a local doctor or our school physician allowing us, uh, to have the test kits on site, that we have to ensure and prove to, um, the group that we have maintained an adequate supply of PPE. Uh, we also have to make sure that our staff is trained in all of the requirements, and there are, um, there is a training that is scheduled for our nursing staff. Uh, we've also, uh, as we prepare and have been preparing to open schools in the hybrid model, we have brought on additional healthcare support, uh, for our school district, and, um, that is, uh, CNA workers will be able to assist our nurses in the day-to-day, uh, business of nursing, uh, in the areas that they are licensed to do so. They will also be trained. Um, it also requires consent from parents or from the, uh, adults who are, uh, being tested. So if a parent, uh, does not want their child to, to have this type of, uh, test done on the school site, um, they do not have to, so you would have to consent to have it done. Um, our goal in working, um, with our students on this is, uh, to be able to keep our students in school as much as possible uh, and, and not have to send them home for any type of additional testing or quarantine, uh, if we don't have to. Um, and we also have to prove our ability to complete all the reporting requirements that go along with the BINAX, uh, testing. So we are excited, one, that we've been awarded, uh, the opportunity for this. Um, we have, uh, hit the ground running when we found out, uh, that we were, um, chosen for this. We have started the process of, uh, getting all the signatures we need, um, our physician's order, um, certainly just outlining the PPE that we have so that they're aware of it, um, and starting, uh, started the testing and as well as, uh, developing a consent form uh, for families that, uh, once that is complete, we will be able to share that with families. Um, so we are meeting again this week to go over, um, our entire process, and we'll be able to share that in more detail with our families. Another, um, item I would like to share with you, and I believe I can, um, share my screen, so I am going to, uh, analyze this. So parents, um, and, um, other folks have been asking about, uh, Patty, if you could just, um, I think you have to share with me so I can share my screen, I think you have to allow me to do that.
Okay. Let's see.
So as everybody knows, we, um, had asked parents approximately two weeks ago uh, to commit to either sending their student back hybrid into our hybrid model or, um, to commit to choosing a remote model. Um, in that commitment form, we did provide parents, uh, with an idea of, um, exactly what the remote learning was going to look like K to twelve. We wanted to make sure that parents were aware that that, uh, remote learning plan was going to change from what it currently is, which is fully remote for the whole school district, and our teachers are teaching all students remotely. Um, to when we switch to the hybrid learning model, uh, parents to when we switch to the hybrid learning model, parents will have the opportunity, had the opportunity to choose for their children to stay home fully until at least the spring, when we hope to be able to open up a second opportunity for folks to change learning models. And so we had to put out accurate information for parents to be able to make an informed choice. And when we asked parents to commit to either the hybrid or remote, we provided them with the information that we had at the current moment. There was a great deal of concern around the elementary model and what that would look like and the dramatic difference in how remote learning would look at the elementary level moving forward as compared to how it looks now. We did not get a whole new set of teachers to be able to do two different learning models, so we have our same number of teachers that we started with, who are now going to be doing two separate models of learning. The idea of giving the parents exactly what we knew was to allow them to make a choice as to which model they would be comfortable with at the very least. And so once that commitment was made, we were able to take that information, and I'm gonna, if I can, my-
Lisa, I don't know where, how do I get to share the screen, I've never done that, I'm sorry.
Go to participants and then next to her name, you should be able to choose by the dropdown.
Okay, it doesn't give me that choice, it says change her role to an attending. It doesn't give the choice to-
If you hover over my picture on the screen and you go to the three, the top right-hand corner and press the dots, will that allow you to make me the co-host?
No, it doesn't give me that choice.
Okay, I can share.
Sorry.
That's okay, I can still provide the discussion and provide the information, and then I can post it to our website so that parents can go on and look at it tomorrow if they would like, and the school committee will have that as well. So we did ask the parents to commit to the hybrid model and the remote model, or the remote model to allow us to know who is coming back in which model, and also to be able to engage in a process where we could look at the total numbers of students that were staying remote and be able to figure out if we could provide a more robust, more synchronous learning model for our students at the elementary level, as they would be the most impacted with the change. I'm happy to report that we are, we are there, we are able to gear some of our staff, I think when we put it out to the families to make their final choice, we were pretty clear in that choosing remote, if your child is in a remote model moving forward, they may have a different teacher, that children may need to change teachers even in a hybrid model. And the information that was provided was to make sure that families knew that this was a potential, especially considering we still have the same number of teachers, but we're now going to begin to teach two models, two separate models. So in terms of the overall, I'll just give folks just a brief overview. In grades K to 2, there was, we have 433 students enrolled in kindergarten at the Gorman Fort Banks. 81 students out of the 433 chose a full remote model. And I'll just break it down very quickly, in kindergarten, that was 23 students out of 125. This will be posted tomorrow, so you can see it. Out in the first grade, 29 students out of 161, approximately 18%. And in grade 2, 29 students out of 147, which was approximately 19.7%. In terms of the Arthur T. Cummings School, the third grade, 33 students in the third grade out of 122 chose full remote, that's approximately 27, that is 27%. In grade 4, 29 students out of 146 chose full remote, 19.9%. In fifth grade, 37 students out of 129 chose full remote, and that was 28.7%. Sticking with the elementary school, what that data allowed us to do, along with a similar collection of data from our staff, it gave us the opportunity to take teachers and look at classrooms across the board and reconfigure student groupings so that we could provide a remote learning teacher specifically for those groups of students who chose full remote. In some cases, it enabled us to put two teachers and split a class of, say, 33 students in the third grade into two remote learning groups. In, in doing so, it has given us the flexibility to provide much more asynchronous learning than we originally thought we could do. It has always been our plan to be able to do that, but in terms of having families make a choice, we could not ask them to make a choice for a remote model that we hope to build moving forward, giving them information that wasn't exact. Asking people to choose a fully remote model that had, that was going to be close to what we have now was not the reality prior to being able to know the number of students who would choose that model, allowing us to reconfigure those groups. Moving forward, our elementary school principals will be offering much more information as we finalize our plans for both the remote and the hybrid model in terms of teachers within the next few days so that parents can see exactly what that model is going to look like. Based on the number of emails we received and, you know, the suggestions that parents had given us and families had given us, all that were reviewed and read by either myself or in combination with the principals, I believe the parents will be much happier with the remote model that we are now able to offer to our students, especially at the elementary level. In the middle school and high school level, remote learning in the next phase of our learning, which is the transition to hybrid phase, those families that have chosen to remain fully remote will not see much of a change in the remote model. However, we had to go through the same process, and to break that down for you, in the sixth grade, 22.5% of our families chose remote. That was 31 out of 138 students. Grade 7, 21.6% of our families chose remote, that's 35 out of 162 families. Grade 8, 27.4% of our families chose remote, and that's 43 out of 150 students. Jumping to the high school, to break that group down, that's 9 through 12. 27.4% of, I'm sorry, 21.2% of our ninth grade families chose remote, that's 28 kids out of 132. 10th grade, 37.3% of our families chose remote, that's 50 students out of 134. In the 11th grade, 31% of our families chose remote learning, 39 out of 126 families. And in grade 12, 35.5% of our families chose remote learning, that's 54% of 152 students. Overall, for those of you who have not just added this up in your head, the total amount of students in the Winter Public Schools enrolled, 1,831. 25.1% of our families in Winter have chosen remote learning for their students. And that number is 460 out of 100, out of 1,831 students. There is a great deal of work that goes in to reconfiguring classrooms for students in our district. You have to take into account our students with disabilities, our students, our EL students, our gen ed students, who they have for teachers now, who the new teacher could be in the remote learning classroom for our elementary students, and then how the students in the middle school and high school are going to engage in remote learning, engage in classroom learning if they are also home fully remote. Over the next few days, you will be receiving information over the next few days, if not the beginning of next week, I'm forgetting it's a short week. Our principals will be reaching out to you to let you know how things are going to look in terms of the schools. I heard a lot of people talk about tonight, the schools are gonna look different. They are, we are not immune to understanding that, and we also feel very strongly that our students and families need to see our schools prior to our students coming back. So stay tuned for more information and more detail from our building principals. And I believe, just a quick update on staffing. Another one of our tasks that we have completed, knowing that we were returning to hybrid learning, was to work with our staff, so not only do we have to reconfigure classrooms, we have to continue to understand which one of our staff members is going to have any concern in terms of coming back to now a new learning model, 100% remote to in-person learning with students in front of them. So we have spent a tremendous amount of time with our staff, gaining and gauging their ability to come back to school. And I would like to just give the committee an overview of the staffing update to this point. In terms of staff members who will be exercising their rights under FMLA for the purpose of either parental leave or pregnancy leave, we have two, two staff members at the fort, one at the Cummings, four at the middle school, and one at the high school. For our staff members who have requested to continue the ADA accommodation of working from home due to their own health condition, which does not enable, does not allow for them to return to school when there is in-person learning, and for many of them who have currently been teaching from home, unlike the majority of our staff who have been working from the classrooms in the school buildings that they are assigned. So that breakdown is three staff members from the Gorman Fort Banks, no staff members currently from the Cummings School, the middle school, four staff members at the middle school, and nine staff members in total from the high school. We are working with those staff members and working with our administration to fill the classrooms in which the staff members who have ADA accommodations would not be able to return to ensure that it's feasible for our classroom to run in that manner and keep our students safe. If you can envision it in the remote model that is happening now, if teachers are teaching from home because they have an approved ADA accommodation to do so, it's because it's reasonable to allow for that accommodation while students are remote. When we go to a hybrid morning, uh, learning model, we also have to assess the reasonability, reasonability of those staff members to continue to have that accommodation. So the options are, if a staff member cannot come back to the classroom, even though there will be children in that classroom, students in that classroom, we have to determine whether or not it's still reasonable to allow for that accommodation. If we don't allow for that accommodation, staff member has the right not to come back to work. They could request a long-term leave of absence, or they could potentially resign from their teaching position. We also have the right to approve an accommodation like that, if in fact we can cover the classroom itself for the purpose of keeping children safe while we open during the hybrid model. And if you can picture what that may look like, if a teacher is teaching math, an example at the high school level, and we approve an accommodation for them to continue to teach from home because of a medical condition and that wouldn't allow them to come into contact with, with others, we would have to stream that teacher's class, that teacher into the classroom where students would be physically present. So if the students are physically present, we, we wouldn't leave students alone in a classroom. So we would have to staff that classroom with another adult, and prior to that adult coming on, they'd have to go through all the regular protocols of, of becoming, you know, onboarding to the school district with proper query paperwork, fingerprints, and, and the like. The classroom itself would be taught by the certified teacher from their home and managed and by the hire that we would put in that, in that classroom. So we are still working on getting staff members, I can assure you that during a pandemic, we don't have a lot of people volunteering to apply for these positions. Having volunteers in a classroom, and many parents have suggested that to us, sounds like a good idea, however, on our end is the managers of the school buildings and responsible for the safety of the students while they're here. Volunteering for a position, in an unpaid position, is just that, you're, you're a volunteer and you're not necessarily required to show up, but students do show up every day. So our goal is to hire as many staff members as we can, as fast as we can. We have been working on hiring since about May of last year, and the applicant pool is slim for sure, and we've taken many avenues to hire, recruiting staff members from colleges, reaching out to the local universities, as many parents saw, reaching out to parents to see if there are people who would like to potentially be classroom monitors, those are the people that would be in, potentially in a classroom when a teacher is unable to return to us, however, the monitors would not be teaching the class. So that's a brief overview of a, of my school committee report for tonight, and I am sure there will be more questions throughout the night that I'll be able to answer.
Lisa, I had, thank you, Mr. Parent, I had a couple of questions. I know this is a chicken and egg problem when it comes to offering the hybrid model and the remote model to parents. But when you sent that out, I take it, as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, you were offering to them, if it's going to be, it's, it could likely be an asynchronous model in a remote situation that if, given the staffing. And so when they answered those questions, were they answering them on the basis of, of being asynchronous, and secondly, if indeed we're able to do any better than that, could they change their minds?
So that's a good question, so many parents asked, you know, why did we put out there that we could only provide the model the way we, about two weeks prior to asking folks to commit, we had explained the model pretty fully, and we're pretty upfront and honest about the fact that in the moment, if we, if we were to open in a remote model without knowing who is truly committing to keeping their children home, we cannot take that staff, those staff members, and redesign how they would be teaching without knowing how many students are actually going to choose to stay fully remote. So that is why we asked them to make that commitment, because if we told them that we could give them exactly what they were getting now, we would not be telling the truth because we didn't have the data to support our ability to do that. And we didn't have any data to support our ability to do much more than primarily asynchronous, but not completely asynchronous. So, and I think the definition of asynchronous not, is something that not everybody really understands or realizes. So we put it out pretty simplistically and pretty flat, knowing that this is what we know we can do. Our goal is to do better, however, without the data to know who's coming back, we can't make any changes for the better, because we need bodies and people to teach those students. So when you ask about changing your mind in the model, we were very clear that we would be allowing parents and, and students to potentially switch to a different model of learning, but not till the spring. And why is that? Because when we build the, and as we have done, built these new models of learning, more specifically at the elementary school, in which, if, if simplistically thinking about it, we almost have two separate schools. We have a remote learning school, and we have a hybrid school. And in hybrid, there's also some remote learning, but they're separate because the classrooms had to be designed where we put a teacher in a classroom specifically for the remote learning kids. So that classroom, as I explained to you, at the elementary level, could have upwards of 20 students in it. If, after we've made that decision now, after, after parents have made a decision for their model now, if parents start to change their mind and want to come out of the hybrid model and go fully remote, that fully remote teacher's class, in essence, is probably already full. And so if, unless seats open up in that classroom, it'd be very difficult to overload that remote learning teacher if she has a class of 25 and 10 kids want to now change midstream. Those 10 kids would have to come out of remote, come out of hybrid and go into that remote classroom, which would now leave that teacher with 35 students to teach in front of her. And so we, we need to make the changes in the spring and open up the opportunity to change again in the spring and not before that.
And so when you say spring, what date would that be? And so when you say spring, what date would that be?
Well, I believe, um, it's going to be a little bit different in each school because we're trying to do it at a natural transition, which would be when a quarter, a trimester changes or a quarter changes. So it's for all schools, it's right, uh, somewhere in the second to third week of March to the first week. Um, actual classes begin the first week, I believe of April. And, and again, seat availability is, is going to be an issue that we haven't faced. And we won't know that until parents start, they'd have to go through a similar process to what they just went through so that we can take all of the students that are known to want to change, compare that to the students that, uh, from hybrid that want to change to remote that have wanted to change. And again, it's more impactful at the elementary level and less impactful at middle and high school. And reason being is middle and high school students can primarily, uh, the, the remote program is not going to be much different than it is now. It will be much, uh, it probably much more clearer to the parents by school because it's a, it is going to be a little different at each school building. Grades won't be different, so you're not going to get a different answer for third graders. But you, there is a, a bit of a different explanation at the Gorman Fort Banks compared to the Cummings, compared to the middle, compared to the high school. And the principals will do an amazing job at explaining that to their parents who need to know that for their particular grade group.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Then would have anything further for, uh, Ms. Howard?
I, I have one more question if it's all right, Mr. Perrin.
Sure.
Um, I did want to know a little bit more about the binex, uh, testing. As I understand it, from what I read in the paper, maybe I'm wrong, that you have to be, in other words, to, to have a positive result, you have to be symptomatic. Is that correct, Lisa?
So you're asking the educational girl, and I'm going to ask Meredith Hurley to jump in because on my best day, I'm not going to pretend to know much about, uh, how COVID.
Let me ask you, yeah, let me just ask you that, 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 just to my question. So you, there, of course, a lot of kids could be asymptomatic. Or teachers, I mean, the community could be asymptomatic. But that is a test that probably won't, uh, as I understand it, what doesn't pick up on the low viral load or those that are asymptomatic. But it does, it does help us in that, in the regard that if they are symptomatic, that we could, we could identify them.
So, and that, that is what the test is designed for. It is not designed to screen kids or staff members as they walk through the door. It is designed specifically for symptomatic, uh, folks identified symptomatic by the process we have in place. Uh, that includes our nursing staff evaluating students when they, uh, or staff members uh, who have symptoms and, and either tell us about those symptoms or presenting with those symptoms. Um, and there is a complete guideline to follow, but it is not, this is not testing where we're going to be, um, randomly picking a group of people or picking students as they come through the door. It would, it definitely is for symptomatic, uh, folks, but I would have to let Meredith Hurley, uh, answer the viral load comment because I'm not, uh, questioning, because I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. Uh, Meredith. Oh, there you are.
Oh, yeah, this, uh, um, I can just jump in real quick. Yep. So, um, with, with this testing, it is, there's still going to be a very robust protocol in place. So, um, it will be if a child or a staff member were to be present, were to present to the school, um, with symptoms. And, um, it's, it's another tool to use, um, but we still have to follow our protocols. Meaning if that child tests negative on the rapid test, but still has a major and a minor, that child still needs to be picked up from school and excluded. Um, so, but it's a way that, you know, if, if we are to capture a positive test result in that moment, um, it speeds up our response, um, as a community in, um, so that's the benefit to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Meredith, for answering that. Any further questions for Ms. Howard before we move on? Okay. Uh, moving on, homeschool applications. Ms. Gallivan, do we have any, uh, pending applications for homeschooling?
Uh, we do not have any new ones right now. I just would like to reach out to any of the parents that are out there. Um, we did have a few people on our survey, um, sorry, on the questionnaire to choose hybrid or remote. There were a couple of people who chose other and it specified homeschooling, private, other. Um, and I know some of the principals have reached out to those families and sent home, um, homeschooling applications because a couple of them were not identified as having applied for homeschooling. So I just urge anyone who is homeschooling, if you haven't done the actual, um, homeschool application and, um, gone through the formal process, to please reach out to your building principal and get that taken care of.
Thank you, Ms. Gallivan. Uh, moving on now to, uh, personnel matters. Uh, Ms. Howard, before we go through, can you just please, uh, as part of that, um, update us on the status of the 10th grade geometry teacher? We've had some, um, correspondence on that. I just want to see if we can get a status.
Sure. The status of, um, that position is that, uh, Mr. Metcalf is, uh, back, uh, teaching that class remotely as, uh, he was prior to his leave. Uh, so I believe that, uh, that has been, um, resolved.
Excellent. Any appointments, resignations, retirements?
So in terms of, um, appointments, there are none. Um, we have a resignation. The high school, uh, art teacher has resigned. We are actively, uh, seeking a replacement, uh, for that teacher. We have, uh, no retirements to port, to report at this time, uh, posting. Obviously, I, I've, uh, mentioned the art teacher at the high school posting, and I have no request for a leave of absence as of today.
Excellent. Uh, moving on to new business. The agenda item is consideration and discussion of the recommendation made by the Tanta Winter Board of Health not to reopen the winter public schools for in-person learning until on or after Ju- January 4th, 2021. The school committee may reconsider its vote to reopen schools for its in-person learning on December 7th, 2020. So the school committee in accordance, just to bring people up to speed, the school committee in accordance with DESI guidance has felt and requested guidance from the Winter Board of Health in a joint meeting, which they returned a vote in their meeting on a recommendation for a start date of on or after January 4th, 2020. Ms. Howard, do you have anything to be said on this matter?
Oh, I do. I just want to, for, you know, the hundred and 20 people that are, uh, watching on Zoom or for those that are watching from home, I think it's critically important to walk people through a, a brief follow-up uh, of where we have, uh, where we have been and where we are in the moment. Um, we do this every day and I pretty much can, uh, reiterate where we've been and where we are and where we hope to go, uh, very easily, but it is very confusing, uh, to families and certainly, uh, somewhat confusing to our staff. So I can imagine what the general population, um, is thinking because it's, uh, been a lot. We've had a lot of meetings and I certainly have talked a lot. So just as a follow-up, uh, to our last meeting and to give you some history, uh, as a result of the new metric that was released on November 6th by the Department of Public Health and supported by the Department of Education, they have redesignated, uh, the color code status, as you all know, and Winthrop has gone, uh, from being red to yellow. At that time, the school committee, uh, has moved forward and at this time with the process of reopening our schools to now include in-person learning. Um, that is, uh, has, has been our effort, uh, from the beginning, uh, of this entire process and more so now that our col- color code, uh, was changed. In an effort to continue to follow the re- the revised guidance, the committee proposed a hybrid lur- model of learning as well as the mandated option for families to choose to remain remote beginning December 7th. The school committee also determined that the date would be contingent upon meeting with the local board of health to seek their input on the health of the communion, community in relation to the start date of December 7th. Given the adjusted metric and the expectations of the Department of Education, I think it's important to note that the, um, that remaining a hundred percent fully remote as a school district is not an option for us and our school committee. Unless there is some extenuating circumstance that prevents the school from meeting all the health and safety of our students during in-person learning. The charge of our committee now is to determine the date that the winter public schools will safely transition. The Department of Education does continue to support that all school districts transitioning from fully remote to in-person learning, review the DPH metric that, which you can see on the dashboard, uh, and report, uh, review those reports just to ensure stability, uh, prior to transitioning. And they also continue to encourage the school district to seek the support of the local board of health related to any proposed transitions that you are going to make. I can assure you that that remains true as I spoke with the Commissioner of Education Saturday morning at nine o'clock. Um, uh, the so, just a quick summary of what's expected under the new DPH metric. It is mandatory for us to offer a full remote learning model to our families who continue to want to have that choice. That means no in-person learning within a school building for those families. It, and we also have to offer either a full in-person model of learning, which would be similar to pre-pandemic school, or a hybrid model of learning. The model that is to be offered is dependent upon the school's ability to meet all of the previous mandates, which it's important to understand, none of those mandates for the health and safety requirements of our schools that were put upon us back in March have been lifted. So the choices that we have in front of us to offer, to, to make a decision on was the full in-person learning or the hy- or the hybrid model. Hybrid model, as you, uh, all are aware on the committee, was chosen because of the distancing requirements and the other safety requirements that we have to have in place for our students when we do return. Six-foot distancing across the board, which has been adopted by our school system and our teachers' union, uh, does not allow us to fit all of our students fully in person. Even at three feet distancing, it doesn't allow us to keep all of our students fully in person. And that is why the school committee, uh, chose to transition to the hybrid model as the second option. So we have two choice, two offers for families, which is the fully remote and the second, which was the hybrid. And a quick review of the history, uh, back, go way back to July 30th. We submitted three learning models to the Department of Ed and committed at that time to open school in a hybrid model of learning. Reason being, at that particular time, we were not a district that was in the red. And back in July, there wasn't even a color-coded metric that we had to adhere to. On, uh, on about August 24th, the school committee voted to revise the opening plan to open school in a fully remote model, given that the Department of Public Health and the state of Massachusetts released a metric on August 19th, but that reflected Winthrop as being a community that was designated in the red. And the expectation of the Department of Education was that schools who were in the red at that time remained opened up fully remote or became fully remote. Fast forward to November 6th, and I know you all thought I was going to bother you from August to November, but there's no need to give you an update on what happened between August and November because we remained completely red as a school district with community numbers per 100,000 as high as in the 50s. On November 6th, the Department of Education and the Department of Public Hu- Health revised and released a new color-coded metric and informed all Massachusetts schools that they're expected to follow that metric and begin the process of transitioning to a model of in-person learning that would continue to uphold all the required health and safety measures. Such things as distancing, mask wearing, PPE requirements, cleaning protocols, et cetera. That was on Friday, November 6th. Winthrop was designated on that day as a yellow district despite the surge in COVID positive cases in our community being 55.3 cases per 100,000. The winter public schools, new expectation was to offer the full remote learning model and also offer a learning model of in-person, uh, learning. Given the six-foot distancing requirements adopted by us, the model at that time, uh, could only be a hybrid model, and that's what we had offered. So on November 6th, the Department of Public Health and Department of Education, uh, changed the metric, revised the metric and announced it. And on November 9th, three days later, the school committee voted, met and voted to transition to a hybrid model of learning on December 7th and agreed to consider the input from the board of health as we move forward. I, I can't emphasize the fact that there was no delay at all whatsoever in reacting to the change in model or the guidance from the Department of Education and the Department of Public Health. Given the December 7th date, it was necessary for the school district to have parents and families commit as to how they would be sending their children back to school so that we could finalize our cohorts for in-person learning and determine our staffing and groupings for our remote learners. Two mo- models of learning that we are prepared to move towards. Without a commitment from our families, it would be unlikely that we would be able to accomplish the task of completing our cohorts, uh, by the time school is to open on December 7th. On November 10th, we held a joint board of health school and school committee meeting in which the board of health shared an overview of the health of the community related to COVID-19. And then subsequently, in their own board of health meeting, they voted to recommend that schools begin in-person learning no earlier than January 4th. That vote was shared with the school committee. The purpose of sharing that vote was to assist the school committee in any further decision-making related to the original school committee vote to transition to a hybrid model of learning on December 4th. As ple- as previously discussed in my superintendent's report, upon the police, upon the completion of finalizing cohorts based on the commitments that families made to hybrid and remote models, we were able to redesignate staff at the elementary schools to be assigned as fully remote teachers, allowing for a more synchronous, remote learning model than we had originally planned for. We are still in the process of filling positions at the middle school and high school to enable us to allow certified teachers who cannot return to in-person learning for health reasons to continue to teach our students remotely. As of tonight, the next task for the school committee, it's, is to decide if they would like to take any further action related to the transition to a hybrid model start date based on the results of the board of health recommend, voted recommendation and the above noted progress related to staffing and cohorts within our school. That, that is, uh, what I prepared for the school committee in terms of, uh, an update. And I do feel, as boring as it is, I do feel it's necessary for people to understand the process, given the fact, uh, that I have heard many folks say, you are, uh, said you were following the protocols, you said you were following the guidance of the Department of Education. Why haven't you been doing that now? In fact, we have been doing it. We've been doing it for weeks. We've been doing it for months. Uh, and we have continued to follow it. There is no, uh, return to hybrid or return to fully remote button that gets pressed. There is no expectation from the Department of Education that you transition immediately. There is an expectation that you transition. Um, and I, at this point in time, don't know how we could transition any faster than we are currently moving. To have the school committee vote to transition to the hybrid model a, less than 48 hours after, not 48 hours, school hours after the Department of Education and the Department of Public Health released the metric, I don't know how much faster a school district can move when somebody makes an announcement on a Friday and you take an action on Monday. So I felt that people just needed to be up to speed on where we have been and what we have been doing uh, and really understand that there has been no delay in following the guidance of the Department of Education. With the commissioner Saturday, uh, I asked him if he, based on his knowledge of the winter public schools, if he, uh, believed there was any delay or if he believed we were, uh, not following the guidance. And his answer to me was no. However, for those of, uh, you who want clarification on that, the Department of Education has an email in which you can email the commissioner's office and ask him those very questions yourself if there is any doubt that the school committee has been following the guidance of the Department of Education or the Department of Public Health. And so that is, that is my update in terms of, um, where the school district is and what the committee has been doing and where we are landing this evening.
Chairman.
Who?
No, no, go on, Tino, because I've talked before.
This has been a very, very difficult meeting hearing everyone speak. And this whole weekend and days, I've been doing a lot of research on some outside of the, the box ideas. Um, I noticed what Saugus and Littleton are doing. They're returning to, uh, they're calling it a orientation level on December 10th where it's, it's not full return to hybrid. It's a couple of days a week, maybe shorter hours, allows students to get adjusted, allows educators to get adjusted. It also gives feedback in between the holidays. For parents to decide what to do in January. And also what Littleton and Saugus is doing is if families are entering a state at high risk. Those families, those students are not allowed to enter within two weeks of December. And two weeks until mid-January for those holidays. I think that's something we should consider. If we do that, I think we'd be following all the correct guidelines.
Ms. Spoh.
I guess I have three questions. Is there any wiggle room in terms of going back? Or does the state demand that we put in place going back to a hybrid model?
Well, I can, I can answer the wiggle room question to the degree that I discussed it with the commissioner. And. I asked him point-blank if we are to return to school. The Monday after the three weeks of looking at the data since we turned yellow. And he said that would be pretty unreasonable. He said, you need to know every community is different. There is no exact date for you to return. The expectation is that school districts will not drag their feet in trying to get students back in school. We talked a lot about our community in comparing it to other communities. Such, you know, in terms of how many schools are already back or how many schools have gone back in hybrid. We are a school district that has been fully remote since the beginning. So I would like to compare us with anybody, school districts that have not had any in-person learning as of yet. We're also a school district that has an extremely high number of cases per 100,000. In this moment, we haven't always been like that initially. When we went into the red, our school district went into the red at a nine-point number, which was 9.7 per 100,000. That's when the metric number of eight got you into the red. We hovered between nine and 11 for several weeks and did not stop that large uptake. In numbers going to 23, then upwards of 34, then 52, then 57, then hit 60, and now back down in the 50s. So comparing us to schools that have already been in-person hybrid learning from September or October. Is not a fair comparison. They've already been in school. So to answer your question, there is no magic date. I can tell you if we were a district that had. Much lower, lower numbers and we were not going back by January, I think. The Department of Education would question that as to why it's taking you so long. We have not been back in in-person learning and our community numbers are different than the average. There is no magic date.
If we go back into the red?
So if you, so again, you've got to talk about rules changing. So prior to the metric changing, the Department of Education changed the rule. On what happens to school districts that are in the red when they're in-person learning. And prior to them changing. Or I'll say it more simplistically. Initially, if your school district turned red while you were in-person learning. You had to watch three weeks of data or should watch three weeks of data. And then decide to move to a fully remote model if that was the case, if things weren't getting better. The Department of Education changed the rule and said if you are in-person learning. And your community becomes, your designation becomes red. Now, even if the community has an uptick. As long as the spread is not within the walls of the school. Meaning a school-based spread, which is our in-school spread, which is tracked through the contact tracing process. If it is not in-school spread, you do not have to revert to remote learning, even if you are red.
So there are repercussions, I take it, for not going back?
So, yeah, so and I asked the commissioner that very directly. What are the repercussions if you do not go back to school within a reasonable amount of time? And what is a reasonable amount of time? And he said reasonable amount of time is different in every school district depending on your community's. COVID situation, presentation, health, however you want to determine it. Or other mitigating factors, you're a school system that your COVID numbers are low, but your HVAC systems are not. In good shape, are not working. Or there are other types of reasons, but perhaps you don't have the staffing. To support opening a school or your entire school, which would be unlikely, but it could happen. They will ask you the very, come out and ask you the question, why are you not back in school? They've done this with schools that, many schools who have never been in the red. Started out completely remote and there are many schools that are barely hybrid. If, or maybe hybrid at different grade levels that have never been a red school district. Those are the school districts that the Department of Education has been focusing on for the last probably five months. And those are the districts that are undergoing pretty significant audits to determine why they're not back in school.
The chairman, may I be recognized?
Yes, Mr. Capriaco.
I'd like to make a motion that we enter on December 7th, an orientation for a transition to hybrid learning. Which will begin in January. But December 7th will be an optional orientation for students to in-person learning.
Do you have a second on that?
Second for discussion.
Does anyone wish to be heard?
What does that mean? What? What does the orientation entail? And is that superintendent prepared to do that?
Well, that's, you addressing me as superintendent, Mr. Boncor.
I'm addressing you to tell me what orientation is, because you're the one that brought it up.
Well, it's been done, like I said, just in my research in Saugus and in Littleton. And it basically, it's, it's planning out for in-person in January. But the students are in their cohorts, they go into it reduced hours, they meet their teachers. It's reduced days in the week, all of that will be up to the superintendent and the principals, the administrators. But this is a phased-in approach to January in-person learning. When that's when the state basically says we have to do it, and that's when the Board of Health deemed it safe to do so. It'll be a phased-in approach and also gives parents and families the ability to have a conversation at the dinner table during the holidays. To discuss if they should send their students back to in-person learn in January. It's a win-win for everyone and also would allow us to continue with winter sports, to allow winter sports. Because we're having in-person learning. It's a win-win.
Any further discussion? Ms. Powell?
Yes, through the chair. Ms. Howard, can you? Give us your recommendations of when you feel that, based on the Board of Health and based on. The plans that you have made, when do you, when would your recommendation be that we go back to school?
So, as you know, my original recommendation was January 4th for many of the reasons that have been discussed. I think we'd all agree that schools themselves are safe. But I can tell you that they're not sort of COVID-protected zones. For example, school buildings don't have the power to keep COVID from entering the front door itself. It is, however, reasonable to think that with, you know, the proper mitigation that we've talked about and the careful approach to safety. That schools can be safe and keep transmission or cases that are within the school building managed when they occur. However, we can't keep COVID-19 from entering through the doorway. And when the cases themselves are extraordinarily high in the community. My opinion, after listening to the Board of Health. And prior to listening to the Board of Health and listening to multiple school districts and reading multiple articles, many of which. Families and staff members have sent to me. It's likely that, you know, even. I guess even with our best efforts in the school, we're going to be less effective in fully holding off those school-based transmissions. If the community transmissions are higher, are much higher than the norm, which. There really hasn't been much discussion about, about the difference in the community numbers. In terms of how people are doing comparisons of who's open and who's not. So if the community cases are lower, I believe that, and we consolidate those gains. With our strict protocols and the practices within our schools that we have. I think our chances of opening and staying open would be proportionately higher. With the new metric from the state, we don't have, as I said, we don't have to automatically revert to a fully remote model. If we do get back, if, when we are back in school, if there's not evidence that the transmission is happening within the schools. Even if the community transition is high, I see our community transition is trending down in the right direction. And the lower the community transition is, the less we are apt to have that impact our schools. We've heard from many parents, the Board of Health and the commissioner over the past several weeks. I think we all agree that students need to get back into in-person learning as soon as possible. And I don't think there's ever been a dispute about that. At this point, I would continue to support my original recommendation of the transitioning on January 4th. I think the adjustment in the calendar allows us to complete filling some of the open positions we have. We may be able to accomplish that before, and I hope we do. It allows the committee to be in sync with the recommendations of the Board of Health. And it really would be in line with our ability to begin in-school rapid testing when we open. As I said, that testing is going to be available to us. Hopefully at the last week of December, but if not, we're being told the beginning of January. Movement of the calendar itself, from what we're talking about, from the 7th to the 1st. Affects really only a few days, what would potentially be in-person learning in the hybrid model between the 7th and the 4th, given the holidays. So, given the, I don't know, given the chance for the community numbers to continue to decrease, gives us a better chance of decreasing the potential. For in-school spreading and decreasing the potential to have to open and shut. I understand people's feeling that when's it going to be early enough? When's it going to be the right day? When's it going to be the right time? Is this just kicking the can down the road? Are we going to say in two weeks, the community numbers are sky-high, we can't, we can't open? I'm seeing a trend down, I'm hoping that people are paying attention. And wanting our kids to get back in school and starting to follow the rules in the community. And I would hope that, you know, if come January 4th, we're ready to go and kids are back in school and the numbers are lower and they stay lower. I do agree with once we get our students back in school, I have many parents talking about. Their students socializing after school because they don't have anything to do during school, and that's what kids do. Having them in school and having athletics back up and running, I believe, will be the best for our students. However, you know, I do still have grave concerns about the height of the virus in our community. And the likelihood of that impacting our schools. You know, does it spread in schools from student to student? From what we're being told, that doesn't seem to be the case. However, you know, we haven't had kids in school, neither has 50% of the Commonwealth. So you're seeing an uptick at the, reported by the Department of Education. But you're also seeing an uptick in in-person learning. I believe when in-school, we can keep kids safe. We can't keep the virus from coming from the outside and being at the rate it's at right now. I don't know if we can prevent it from coming through the door. I want kids in school as much as every other person. I have to say what's safe for all students and what I think is a good reasonable timeframe for all students. And not just students from the side of the families that want their kids back in school and believe that we need to follow the science. Or the other side of families who are genuinely concerned about their students. I believe we are giving two choices. We're giving the choice of parents to stay, keep their kids home, and the parents to send their students back in hybrid. Our job is to make sure that when we put those two choices into play, that we're doing it without emotion. And thinking about the health of our students and our staff. If we lead with the motion, I don't know that we would make the right decision. Because I have a motion for both sides of this. I am here every day, I am overseeing the 1,800-plus students we have. Plus the one I have at home, who's not enjoying staying home, who's not enjoying being home alone, and I do see the impact. He's in good company with many students that are having a similar impact. And I can tell you that fair amount of the work that we will be doing as educators in this school district. When students are back in place, whether it's 50% of our kids, 75% of our kids, or 100% of our kids. Is we are going to be adjusting all the trauma that our students have had since being out of school in March. This has not been fun for anybody. But the students are our focus. And when they come back to us and folks are able to get back to work and folks are able to resume some normalcy. I can tell you that our staff is going to be dealing with the cleanup of what this pandemic has caused. And let me be clear, it's the pandemic that has caused what's happening to our society, our students and our adults. It is not remote learning. Remote learning has not caused this. And I'm going to stop there before I get myself into trouble. And I hope I answered your question and probably as usual, over answered.
Ms. Barry, I know you had your hand up, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. I actually have a couple of questions from Meredith. As they relate to our current community numbers and the reporting that's being done. I understand that there's some discrepancy with potential false positives. So for example, if somebody in our numbers, so if somebody goes to get tested and they're positive and they have to keep going back for work or what have you. That every time they test positive, it could be the same person, but they test positive four times or seven times. That number gets counted in our positive rating, even though it's only one person. Can you verify that for me?
Yeah, that is what happens, but on the flip side. They also are counted in the denominator, so they're being counted in the numerator, they're being counted in the denominator. So I was on the phone this afternoon with a colleague of mine who was an epidemiology professor at BU. Kind of teasing out this a little bit to understand this a little bit more and to determine how sensitive that number is. I mean, I think people have heard me talk a bit about. About the inclusion of percent positive and the weight that it's being given in these decisions. And, and so, you know, I got the clarification from DPH that is exactly what's happening. That if, in, what you can see in the, in the most recent dashboard of DPH. Is that they reported in that timeframe, the previous one, so it would have been November 1st to the 14th. We, as a community, reported out 135 positive cases, whereas I believe DPH had us at 230. And that's what they use for the percent positive. So we could assume that that, that there was 100, nearly 100 duplicate cases, but they were also in the denominator. So, understanding is that that is still a solid metric. And if we try to manipulate that in some capacity. What I was actually trying to figure out is, should we be deleting those and only using our confirmed cases? But then we don't have a way to control. We don't have a way to control the validity of that on the denominator. So, so it wouldn't be an effective practice to do that. So, whereas with the incidence rate, I am able to have much better control over that. Because it's a confirmed case and we do it that way. So, yeah, that's, that's a very long-winded answer.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything further? Ms. Spoh.
I, I'm a little worried about. Thinking about any date going back without knowing the data. That is going to surround the date that we plan to go back, Lisa, because. I, from what I can see, the testing's around the block here, I know that people are being tested. I don't know if they're, I know I've been tested a couple of times and I'm sure other people have on this too. But. If indeed what is being said across the country is true. And the cases continue to rise particularly through this holiday season. Think that we, to think that we would be going back on January 7th regardless of what the data shows us. Is frightening, it's already frightening to me that we're going back, thinking of going back at a time. When the community spread is so hot. If the community spread were low, then I would think the schools would follow. That that would be no different in the schools than it would be in the rest of the community. Because people don't. That that would be no different in the schools than it would be in the rest of the community, because people don't stay in schools. So to think it's community spread because of schools versus immunity spread outside of schools to me makes absolutely no sense. It's a, it's an aerosol virus. I mean, it it's in the air. It lingers in the air. So the longer you stay with people in the same room, breathing the same air regardless of the ventilation, I think you risk more community spread regardless of where that happens. So, why, why the January seventh issue? I mean, why then? Because kids are just coming back from vacation. I take it that many will travel. So, why the seventh?
So, just to answer, you know, I think it was directed at me. So it was actually January January fourth was the date. And I'm going to sort of draw it on a limb and say, because the school committee voted December seventh, and I'm living right now in the moment of not feeling like December seventh is going to be the time to go back and a more reasonable date down the line would be January fourth with the hopes that we have, the obviously the additional supports put in place with the now binax testing. And on the numbers, seeing the it's trending down in our community, I am hopeful that the community will continue to support. I see this line for COVID testing that's been around the front of the town hall since one o'clock this afternoon. I think people are are serious, taking this serious. I think they are going to get themselves tested to make sure that they are not going to put anyone at risk. Not that that's a guarantee, because we all know that the testing is a moment in time. We go from test to target, God bless, because you are now not, you know, you go from testing to home and in your room, and then you want to do your Thanksgiving, and hopefully that's what people are doing. However, I'm feeling confident that the town is responding to this and that they are listening, maybe some of those who weren't, and they are, they are taking this seriously. I know, you know, close to two thousand kids and probably over a thousand families that are taking this seriously and they want their kids back in school. I think those efforts will be, you know, we'll see the the value of those efforts after the, after the holidays that we wouldn't have otherwise seen. People weren't taking these, you know, these recommendations from the town seriously. In terms of a date, I guess you could put any date out there. The state can come in and shut down towns again and bring us all back to step one, and we don't have any control over that. I don't like to leave students without hope. I can tell you that. And by not having a vision or a hope or a place to go, our kids are left without hope, and they'll probably feel like we failed them if there is no hope to go back at all. And that is what I don't want to leave them with. And I do see, you know, my my hope is that we are going to have these numbers continue to trend down, and with the additional supports, as I said, that we have with the binax testing, I think that will also be a factor in our ability to go back in January.
Yes, Mr. Machu.
Just based upon the, the Board of Health's, you know, meeting with them and their, their recommendations and their report, it was said by them that there'll be a spike increase super-spreader during the holidays. So my question to Lisa, and she's doing an unbelievable job again. I don't know how she does it. But would be how we expect to go back based upon the Board of Health's report of there being a super-spreader spike in COVID cases in Winthrop during the holidays. That's, I just don't understand how we could go back on the fourth or the seventh. Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I mean, again, they their recommendation was not before the fourth. So as a, as looking at my glass half-full, I'm saying not before the fourth is not the fourth. You know, and if they're predicting that there is going to be a super-spreader, you know, spike or or what have you, I'm seeing the numbers are starting to come down. I am more hopeful that that will not be the case, because like I said, it seems as though there has been a huge increase in in folks not wanting there to be a spike, and people are getting tested and seem to be doing the right thing. You know, I can't predict when this is going to go away, but again, I also, you know, don't want to if people think so accurate information, apparently out there is that, and Meredith can correct me if I'm wrong, two weeks after the end of the holiday season is when we will know if there is a super spike. That would push the date to the, I believe, the eighteenth or nineteenth of January. If the committee feels that that is a better date for proposed opening of a school, that may, that may be what you choose to do. Again, trying to stick with the positive aspect of this and trusting that our community is going to get these numbers to come down and given our our additional mitigation, I would, that is where my date of the fourth, which ironically was the date that I proposed to the committee three weeks ago, or four weeks ago now, I've I've lost track of time. That was my original, my original date. I do know that in this particular moment in time, the seventh is awfully close with, it's still extremely high numbers. And the the committee, you know, can can choose a date beyond that if they want to really go reflectively off of what the Department of Public Health had to say. I don't know if Meredith wants to add, or hasn't anything to add to that.
Chairman. Mr. Machu, just wait for Meredith. She's asked to speak.
Yeah, so that is why we have the recommendation of the ten to fourteen days post, post an event. You know, it gives us, it gives us that, that timeframe that we're able to see if there is transmission. I would love to to say that we could hope that there isn't. But, you know, it seems like all the infectious disease practitioners are kind of projecting this. And again, it is beyond complex to try and make these decisions and foreshadow any sort of any, any sort of situations. You know, so really just taking, I guess it's just synthesizing whatever information and data that we have.
Thank you.
So, obviously, there's seventy-five percent of the parents and students that want to go back. Based upon what the CDC, Dr. Fauci, the experts have all said, that school is the safest place to be, then we should be voting to go back to school, which I think we already have on the seventh. If the superintendent, if she doesn't have the staff, if the teachers decide, you know, if if twenty-five percent of the teachers decide not to come in or take whatever they're going to take and go and do whatever, then we can't open, then that's one thing. But if we're saying that it's not safe to go back to school because of the buildings or the spread or whatever, it's already been proven by the data that that's not the case. So if it's for another reason, that's fine. We have to, you know, work through that. But again, it's the safest place for kids to be, is what they've said. This is what they've all said. This is what I hear. Even the Board of Health said it. Of course, they didn't, you know, recommend or they didn't vote or whatever they did for us to go back on the seventh. But I would think to go back on the seventh, whatever, however that is, whatever regular ed kids go back on the seventh, and there is no spread, there's no spike, there's no cases, that would prove to me that it was safe to be in school and these kids were were safe and the staff was safe. And that you could go back after the holidays either way.
Okay. My thought is we have a recommendation from the superintendent for a minimum of what the Board of Health to be in concert with what their recommendation was. And under this motion, even for an orientation period, but less hours, would still put us in the same situation where the Board of Health, their guidance. And again, it's it's not a directive, it's guidance. We asked for that guidance. I I I would think this motion would not be a good idea, even for less hours, because I think it still puts us in that same position. So I I would, I I intend to vote no on the orientation portion. Although I like the idea, too, you know, I just think it's a little need to make that kind of an adjustment, but that's just my feeling.
Motion to move the question.
If I make one one more last comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I agree with you. I I don't know if we're ready yet for full-time on the seventh, but that's why I'm trying to think out of the box and do my due diligence and talk to everyone. And I think a short orientation period could be helpful for everyone, and I would like to to roll call my motion, please.
Excellent. Ms. Hames, can you call the roll call on that motion, please?
Yes. Ms. Barry?
I'm sorry, could I just ask a quick question of Mr. Perrin? Can you just explain to me what I'm voting for? So if I vote?
That's on the table for Mr. Capabianco, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Capabianco, is that we would open on the seventh in an abbreviated scenario where it would be an orientation period, not a full-time hours under the current hybrid model.
Yes, a a brief orientation period, which has been done in other communities, as I said, Sawgus and Littleton. And they're doing half-days, they're doing a couple of days a week. That will be obviously decided by the the superintendent and the administrators. But not a full, you know, every full two weeks sort of thing.
So, Ms. Hames, could you, does that answer your question, Ms. Barry?
Yeah, it does. Yep.
Okay. Then we'll call the roll. Patty?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
If this is the only way to get the children back into school on the seventh, then I would vote yes.
Mr. Boncory?
No.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Machucci?
Yes.
Ms. Spoh?
No.
Ms. Powell?
No.
Mr. Perrin?
No. Okay. Does anyone wish to make a motion on on the start dates in line with the Winthrop Board of Health guidance and recommendation for discussion purposes at this point?
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we follow our superintendent's recommendation of January fourth start date based both on her recommendation and the recommendation of the Board of Health.
Ms. Powell's motion. Does anyone have a second to that motion? I will second the motion for discussion. Any discussion? Ms. Spoh?
I think the only thing that we have ever thought about really is what's been shown under ideal circumstances is that when we have low COVID nineteen rates, we have high testing and tracing, and we follow all the rules, we can knock this virus down. We can't solve it until we get a vaccine, but we could really change the the course. And I would hope that we, whatever, Lisa, whatever timeframe Lisa wants to propose, she should propose it, but I don't think we should be voting on a timeframe like that until we come back and to see where we are on whatever date we hope to get back to school on. It just seems that if we were to go up and spike and and whatever, that going back to school on a date like that would be problematic. That's my comment.
Mr. Boncory and then Julie.
Yes. I I think the situation is that the Board of Health recommended, recommended we go back no sooner than January fourth. And that was the recommendation of a superintendent for the last meeting. The town of Winthrop was in the red thirteen weeks in a row, and only because they changed the metric did we get out of the red and into the yellow, but our numbers increased. Our numbers went up much higher than when we were in the red. And just this weekend, we got seventeen new cases, and unfortunately, a one person died of COVID last night. And, you know, I think people are taking it a lot more serious now. If you looked at the center this this past weekend, there weren't people in the restaurants like there have been. I think people are testing tremendously. The line has been around the corner all the way past the library for the past week. People are taking it a lot more serious, and hopefully our numbers are going to come down. But I think we need to leave it up to our professionals. I mean, we hire a professional like Lisa Howard and a professional like Meredith Hurley, and we have a Board of Health full of professionals such as Dr. Wines. Why do we have these people if we're not going to listen to them? And we should be listening to them, and that's the only reason why I am voting along with the no sooner than January fourth date. I want the kids back in school full-time. I don't like the hybrid, you know, model at all. I really don't like the model, even though it's got better now that they're not going to have the asynchronous asynchronous learning, and they're going to have full remote during the hybrid. So I'm I'm happy that that change has been made, but I want to see everyone back full-time. And the only way we're going to get back full-time is if our numbers go down. In the meantime, I think we have to follow the advice of our professionals and vote no sooner than January fourth.
Thank you. Ms. Barry?
I think when we look at following the advice of our professionals, we must also look at Desi and look at what they're telling us, which is that if we are in the yellow zone, now granted, they changed the metrics. They changed the metrics because they were unfair to communities of our size. Now they've changed the metrics. We've been in the yellow for three weeks. We need to get our children back into school because Desi, who is an expert in this field, tells us to do so. We're now saying we're not going to go back early, any earlier than January fourth. That doesn't mean we go back on January fourth. That means we're kicking the can down the hallway again, and here we go. I, this is just unacceptable to me, the way that, you know, I'm beyond frustrated, beyond frustrated.
Mr. Machu?
Yeah, I just want, just want, Mr. Boncory, to know that I I am listening to the Board of Health, and what they said was is that the schools are safe to go back. And also, they said there was going to be a super-spreader spike during the holidays, which is the reason why they didn't want us to start before the holidays, which gives me no confidence that we're going to be able to start after the holidays. So I am listening to the Board of Health, the other professionals. But I'm also listening to other professionals, maybe even higher up than the Board of Health, like the CDC and Dr. Fauci, who's like the, I guess, the premier epidemiologist in the in the country or maybe the world. And what they're saying is the safest place for kids to be is school. The other thing I'm listening to are the parents and the students who want to get back to school any way they can and any any capacity that they can. And I know I have the ultimate confidence since Lisa to get them back into school in in whatever capacity she can and the staff can on December seventh. And I I think that's listening to the Board of Health. That's what they did say. Their recommendation, however, was different, and I don't know what that was based on, because what I heard in their presentation was nothing how the results of their vote was.
Fear. That's what it was based on.
Ms. Barry, I would ask you go through the chair. Mr. Machucci is the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Barry?
I'm good.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything further? Ms. Powell?
Yes, I appreciate all of the students and the parents who spoke up. Especially appreciate hearing from the students. I understand that this is a frustrating time for everybody. There is no ideal solution. Going back now is not ideal. Going back January fourth is not ideal. Going back in a hybrid is not ideal. There is just simply no great decision or easy decision here. Desi asked us to be mindful of our Board of Health, because our Board of Health is in our town, and they are closest to what is going on with us. Desi's recommendations are across the board state. They are not particular to us. Lisa, Lisa Howard has spoken with Desi. She's explained to them our situation, and they are supportive of us going back on January fourth. I think that if you look at the numbers of the schools that have gone back, the number of kids and staff who are who have COVID have doubled in a week. And it was in an increase from the week prior to that. So it may not be a super-spreader, but it is reflective of our community, and the kids are spreading it. Or they're getting it from somewhere, and we're putting our kids at risk. It's not, it's fear either way. You're fearing for their mental health, which is valid and very important, and I would urge our administration, and I know that they are mindful of it, and I think that we need to talk about what we can do for the mental health of our students, because we need to address that issue. But we also need to make sure that we are doing But we also need to make sure that we are doing what we can to protect our students from this disease and our community. We need to get these numbers under control. We need them to fall and we need to do what we can to set up a situation in which these numbers can go down.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. I, the motion on the floor is a return date of January fourth, uh, twenty twenty in rec, in line with the recommendation of the superintendent and the Board of Health. Uh, Ms. Haynes, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry? Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Machucci?
No.
Ms. Swope?
Yes, I'm hoping that we'll hear more from the Board of Health.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. The motion passes. The date has been updated to January fourth. I would not be in favor of pushing the date out any further, Ms. Swope. I, I think we really need to, to get the kids back and acting in accordance with the Board of Health and the superintendent's recommendation, I think we can get there. So that's, that's the goal. And I, I, I won't be changing my vote unless there's some substantial change to the metric or the numbers in the community. Okay, next item of business. Updated policy on harassment. Ms. Howard, can you bring us through that, please?
Sure. Um, I will, I'm going to defer to Jen, uh, O'Connell, who's our, uh, Director of Pupil Personnel Services. This is related, um, to, uh, just a type for our Title IX compliance. So it's a, it's a minor change in the policy that just needs to be recorded on the books. Jen O'Connell, are, are you still with us?
I surely am.
Oh, there you are. So, uh, if there's anything you can add to, uh, to this policy.
So, good evening, everyone. I'm going to keep it brief because we have been at this a long time. So, um, the updated discrimination policy that you all see before you um, is a result of changes to the federal Title IX laws and the way that the district goes about dealing with and investigating sexual harassment cases. Just, uh, as a point of refresher, Title IX protects people from discrimination based on sex in educational settings. So the changes, it's a very prescriptive process that comes down from the federal government. And, uh, just to give you a brief overview, the major things that changed are the roles of those that are investigating, the training involved for those who investigate, and the specific rights afforded to the parties involved. Um, schools have to respond to the allegations of the sexual harassment upon having actual notice. And a school has notice when any employee learns of sexual harassment. And that has to be reported to the Title IX coordinator. And this change is different from how the policy, uh, was previously because, um, written notice had to be given. And basically, a, after that, the manner that we write that up is different. Um, everyone that is involved has specific roles. Um, there has to be an investigator, a decision maker, an appeals officer, an informal resolution officer, along with the Title IX coordinator. Uh, specific measures have to be afforded to both the complainant and the respondent. So the complainant is the person who's making the complaint and the respondent is the person the complaint is against. As stated before, there's specific training that everyone must partake in that's involved in the investigation process. And the training, the policy and the grievance procedure will be posted on the district's website. That sums it up. Does anybody have questions about that?
Any questions for Ms. O'Connell?
Thank you, Jen.
Do we need a motion on that to accept the changes to the, uh, harassment policy?
Yes.
Can I get a motion, please, to accept the changes, uh, as required by law on the Title IX?
I'll make a motion to accept the changes as required by Title IX.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Can I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Barry. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Haynes, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Barry? Mr. Boncory? Mr. Boncory?
Yes. Sorry, I was muted.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Machucci? Uh, Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Thank you. We will have that updated, um, and posted to the school's website where it needs to be, uh, for staff and others, uh, tomorrow.
Thank you. Uh, now we have the athletic update. I believe Mr. Sereno has been patiently standing by, uh, to update us on the MIAA dates.
Uh, thank you for, for having me. I also wanted to start off by saying thank you to all of you for the job that you've been doing and continue to do. Obviously, this is a challenging and unique time and I appreciate all your, your efforts and I know it certainly will go a long way, so thank you. Um, so just to give everyone an update on athletics, the winter season was scheduled to begin on November thirtieth. The MIA has pushed that start date now to December fourteenth. And as a league, uh, the Northeast Conference has also made a change to not allow any games until, um, January ninth. So the winter season would start on December fourteenth and no games would be allowed, um, until January ninth. The sports that are being offered this winter for Winter Up would be, uh, basketballs, hockey, gymnastics, and swimming. Uh, the indoor track has been moved to that. There's a fall two season that would happen from February to March. So, um, the only sport we would not be offering in the winter season, if we're allowed to play, would be indoor track. That has been moved. Um, otherwise, that is really the, the only updates we, we have athletically. Um, if you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I just, I had one through the chair.
Loud.
So if, um, the, so sports, first game for us is the week of the ninth?
Yep, Saturday, the ninth.
The first date that athletics is able to start for the winter season is December fifteenth.
December fourteenth.
December fourteenth. So with our students, um, moving to a hybrid model, um, on January fourth, would they be able to start to practice? Prior, so would they have to? How many practices would they need between the start date of school and January ninth to be eligible to uh, participate in the first game of the season, I guess, is my question.
So if we, if we started athletics on the fourth, we would need eleven calendar days before we could participate in that first athletic event.
Which, so, so January ninth, they would, they would not be able to play that, in that first game? And what would happen to that game?
Correct. So we, I believe if my math is correct, we'd be able to start games on the fourteenth. So any games in between the ninth and the fourteenth, we would just reschedule either at the end of the, the winter season or, um, at a time agreed upon with the other schools throughout the winter season.
If the other schools don't agree, because I know we've been through something similar in the spring, but if the other schools don't agree and we're not in-person learning, do we forfeit that game?
Yeah, I mean, technically, we don't have, there's no standings or anything for this winter season. There's no state tournament. So, um, technically, yes, we would just forfeit the game, but really it just, it would be a, a no contest.
Okay. And is there any possibility? Because I know this question will come, if it's not already in my email, it'll be there tomorrow morning. Um, is there a way? Is there any way for students who are not actually in the hybrid learning mode by the fifteenth of, uh, fourteenth of December? Is there any way for those students to, uh, start to practice? Or, uh, or anything such as that that would count towards that, um, those days?
So just to make sure I'm, I'm understanding correctly, are you, you're asking if, if we're still remote learning, is there any way for our winter sports teams to start before that, um, eleven-day grace period before we need to play in a game?
Yeah, is there, does MIAA have any rule? Or, uh, do they tell you, tell us we have to do anything in order to allow, allow our students to practice?
I, yeah, so my, my understanding is that if we are still remote, um, that school committee could put forth a policy that would allow us to participate in winter athletics while still remote. Um, I think there are a few outliers, you know, if we change to red, um, that could be a determining factor, but it's my understanding that, um, school committee, if, if agreed, would put together a policy that would allow remote learning, under remote learning to play in the winter season, that would allow us to start before that January fourth date.
Okay, I think it probably, most likely it's a, it would be a motion of the committee to approve starting, allowing students to, to practice prior to the di, first date of remote learning, I guess, is what, probably what that would be. I don't know if they, did they? Does MIA require a policy change that you know, or is, could it be a policy or a motion, or we just have to check on that?
I'd have to check on that. It wa, it was presented to me as a, as a policy, but I would, I would have to check the language of that. And, and that's also in conjunction with administration's approval as well.
So I think those are important things for us to know in terms of, um, what the, the school committee's options are. Um, especially where, where, you know, moving from one date to another. I, I know that the, at least the high school parents are going to be asking, um, whether or not we're going to allow them to practice before the fourth. Uh, so I think that's something that the school committee, just to have it out there for the school committee to understand that those questions will be coming, I would imagine. Maybe they won't. Uh, but if they do, um, it's something the school committee will have to consider. But you guys, you, you all would need to know exactly what you were considering. So, um, are students technically not start practicing or doing anything with athletics until we return to the hybrid model? Unless the school committee determines that they would allow for that to happen. Um, and in our case, if athletics from an MIA standpoint open up on December fifteenth, our students could only start to practice before January fourth, if in fact the school committee gave them permission to do so. Did I, did I make that sound a little easier, Matt?
Yep, that was perfect.
This, this.
So it's up.
I, I just like, just, if I could have one minute. So I'd like to see if we get a motion, uh, this evening in the event that we, that a, a, a vote would be allowed, Mr. Sereno. Um, and if not, I think we need to go to the Athletic Subcommittee, but I, I don't want to hold it back so that we're waiting. So if there's a chance that we could, uh, get a motion this evening, uh, for discussion purposes to begin with. Uh, and then if, if it's a vote. And thank you, Mr. Capabianco. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Barry. Uh, for, my thought is if, with this, uh, motion right now, if we vote and we don't need to come back and go to the, yeah, Policy Subcommittee, then it's resolved. If it does, and you tell us it does have to be a policy, let us know right away so that we can schedule a very quick policy Subcommittee meeting so that we can, uh, act upon that, uh, in our next meeting, so we don't waste any time.
Yep.
So is there any further discussion on the motion?
May I make a good question?
Yes, Mr. Capabianco.
Uh, Mr. Sereno, thank you for working on this. I do have two quick questions. One, um, after the fourth, if a family opts to keep their child remote, are they still allowed to play? And are there any rules in terms of spectators?
So i, in regards to if it's a remote, um, learner who would like to participate in athletics, that obviously would be a, a further discussion, I think. Um, I'd have to have with Superintendent Howard and also school committee on, on, uh, your views on, on how you guys would, um, interpret that. But I, I think that's certainly a piece that can, can, can be discussed. Um, and then in terms of spectators, the EA guidelines are, are out and for indoor venues, which obviously all of our, our sports would be. Um, but the MIA actually, or I should say, our, um, Northeast Conference has a stricter policy. So right now, the Northeast Conference has a policy of, um, per home athlete, you're allowed to, um, family members or individuals living within your household. Um, you're not allowed at any away events. Um, and like I said, you're just allowed per, per student athlete, you're allowed two spectators at each home event.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, if possible, could we amend my motion to allow all of the, um, public school students, regardless if their family chooses hybrid or remote to participate in, in extracurricular activities?
Do I have a second on that, uh, amended motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Okay, uh, the, I, I, I want to call the vote unless there's further discussion, Ms. Swope.
Uh, I'm sorry.
A point of clarification. Uh, Matt, it, did you say if we, if we vote to not go back in sports until January fourth, that we would forfeit, but it would not really be a forfeit as it would in a regular season? And that, um, we could then change those games that were scheduled between the fourth and the fourteenth or whatever of January to a later time? So they still would be able to play those games?
Yeah, so, so the way that the, the winter season, um, works is the last date we can schedule games is on, um, it's like on the calendar, February twentieth. So we would have the ability, if it works with the other schools, we would have the ability, any games that we missed, to reschedule either at the end of the winter season or, um, at some point throughout the, the middle of the season. Um, and then in regards to whether you want to call it a forfeit or a no contest, if we don't make up the games, um, there's no conference championships, there's no state tournament. Um, so really the records are, are not relevant to anything. So i, it's really up to each school how they want to determine that as a, you know, a, a loss or just not even counting it.
Thank you.
And Mr. Sereno, the, the, um, the guidelines, the protocols are very strict with, uh, how they practice distancing, um, equipment, PPE, uh, transportation, everything is pretty much spelled out at this point, correct?
Yes, so the, uh, obviously we have to follow by the EA guidelines for each sport. Desi has guidelines in terms of transportation. Um, we have our own, um, protocols for, for each sport. And then also the MIA has modifications for each sport to adapt to the, um, to, to COVID. So, uh, yes, there is, there are several policies now in place through several different, uh, resources to, to house winter sports.
Thank you. Any further question?
Mr. Perrin, I'm sorry, I did have a question. I must be tired. I didn't hear the original motion. So could, could I just have the wording for the original motion?
Mr. Capabianco, will you restate your motion with your amendment?
So I believe the motion would be to allow winter extracurricular activities in sports to all students, whether they are, the families opt their children to be hybrid or remote after the fourth, and they could practice starting whatever MIA allows it, as long as all of the safety protocols are followed.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion, Ms. Hay, Ms. Howard?
Um, just for a point of clarity in the motion, the difference, so this discussion was about athletics. So there's a difference, um, in the, in the understanding of staff and families for extracurricular activities and athletics. So I think this discussion.
Change the word into athletics.
Say it again?
I, I could happily change the word into athletics.
Yeah, I just don't want to confuse, okay, families about what we can do with the protocols and what we can't.
I think that was your original motion, Mr. Capabianco, sports.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, bearing in mind that we may have to go back and have a policy meeting if this doesn't suffice, uh, for Mr. Sereno's purposes.
So I believe I'm the Athletic Subcommittee chair, so Mr. Sereno happy to meet with you anytime.
Thank you.
So, uh, Ms. Haynes, could you call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Ms. Barry?
Yes?
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Ms. Swope? Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Okay, we're moving on to the school handbooks.
Yes.
Um, has everyone had an opportunity to review those school handbooks? Does everybody, anyone have any questions or, or discussion, uh, or ideas for the handbooks that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, Lisa, I noticed that there weren't any changes in the, um, middle school ATC, but there was a lot of changes, I believe, in Fort Banks. Is there a reason for that? It, it, it looks like COVID was, um, uh, addressed more in the Fort Banks one. Did I? So, um, Principal Curly, um, likes detail. And so he has lots in there and I, and the changes are pretty cyclical in these. So depending upon, um, what you did last year in, in terms of your changes, you may not have much to change for this. So depending upon um what you did last year in in terms of your changes, you may not have much to change for this current school year. So the principals have all gone through them. Um Mr. Curly does like to to add a little bit more detail. The COVID policies and procedures that we have in school pretty much cover all of that. Uh so I I didn't, I've read through each one of them. I didn't see anything that would be unusual. That I would say that you would have to be concerned with um any major change, any major change in in major change in any of the. School handbooks would be uh for sure pointed out directly. There's been no change in discipline. Um in any of the buildings. Some of it was simply wording. We did a pretty good job of cleaning them up over the past few years.
It was only the COVID stuff that I did.
Okay, thank you. And and each year they need to be voted on because they have to be submitted to the Department of Education.
I move that we approve the student handbook.
Thank you, Mr. Schools. Can I get a second upon that?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Uh I believe we've had discussion, but is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can you call the roll, please, for the record?
Yes, Ms. Barry.
That's a yes.
Mr. Boncory.
Yes.
Mr. Capabiano.
Yes.
Ms. Swope.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Powerin.
Yes. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. There is none. Public relations, Ms. Barry. See this evening. Mr. Boncory.
Oh, everyone, just please be safe, have a happy Thanksgiving, but have a very safe Thanksgiving, please. Let's get our numbers down because I want the kids back in full time.
Yes, real quick, I just received a call, a few calls from the football coaches. I guess it was said in public comment last week that they were fully practicing. Um and they just wanted to clarify that that's not true, not the case, and against all MIA regulations.
Uh thank you, Mr. Capabiano. The Ms. Powell.
Nothing today.
Ms. Swope.
No, thank you.
And I have nothing for public relations. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second by Mr. Boncory. Uh can I get a roll call vote, please, Patty, for the record?
Yes, Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Mr. Boncory.
Yes.
Mr. Capabiano.
Yes.
Ms. Swope. Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Powerin.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you all.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.